Adrian N. Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, November 20th, 2023, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for November 20th, 2023. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh. I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you very much, Adrian. I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will move on to presentations. We have the Iowa Stormwater Educational Partnership 2023 Water Warrior of the Year recognition. I believe that Iowa Stormwater Educational Partnership Executive Director Pat Sauer is with us virtually. Pat, are you there?
Adrian, I don't see him on right now.
Yeah, I don't see her on the virtual meeting, so I'm not sure if someone else is able to make this recognition.
Got a pinch hitter right here.
So I wasn't expecting this, Gus Sahoyis, city engineer. The Iowa Water Education Partnership every year recognizes at their annual meeting a Water Warrior of the Year award. Darren won it this year, and it was for his work in the B Branch Creek Restoration Project, the watershed flood mitigation project, and his work with the city's watershed partnership with Dubuque County, also the Dubuque Soil and Water Conservation District, and the Catfish Watershed Management Authority. So I'm a little emotional. Congratulations, Darren, on this. But Darren left our department a week ago, and he's obviously the manager of the wastewater recovery center, so I want to thank Darren for his 25 years working with them. It was a great opportunity to work with him. He did so much for the city of Dubuque, our engineering department, and we miss him already. So that's my recognition. So thank you, Darren. Congratulations on the Water Warrior of the Year.
First, thanks to the Iowa Stormwater Educational Partnership for this award. Gus, thank you for the introduction and the kind words. I have to echo what he said. I've truly loved going to work and working with Gus all those years, and it was a very hard decision to move on, but it was time to kind of step out from underneath his big shadow and from under his protective wing. But in terms of the award, you know, I wouldn't be up here receiving this award if it wasn't for the work of the City Council and the current City Council, past City Councils, who have been water warriors based on their actions in, you know, undertaking the B Branch Creek Restoration Project and promoting and sponsorships with other Dubuque County organizations and just really caring about watersheds. So really want to share this with all of the City Council members and past City Council members. And we have all kinds of water warriors throughout Dubuque County, too, so just want to thank everybody for this award. So, thanks.
Well, Darren, I got to tell you, it's hard for me to think of a more deserving person than you to win this award. And I just think it's going to be the coolest thing ever to call you the Water Warrior from now on. That is just going to be a lot of fun, and it really does make sense. I mean, I've been so impressed with the work that you have done and the rest of the engineering department and honestly the rest of the city staff when it comes to stormwater and flood mitigation and all the things that we've been working on as a community for a long time. So thank you for being a leader in that and taking that on, and we're glad you didn't go far. You're still here with the city of Dubuque, so that's great. Thank you, Darren. All right, Adrian.
We'll move on to consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration, and consent items can be found on pages two through five of the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Do we have anyone here in chambers who would like to remove any of the consent items? Come on up. Yep, you can say it in the mic there, please, sir.
State Representative Chuck Eisenhardt, 1665 Kaufman Avenue, have some comments related. I believe it's item 22.
Yeah, I think you're right. Yeah, the state legislative priorities.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Representative Eisenhardt?
Do that now?
No, we'll call you back up. We'll make a motion on the other ones first. Any other items that we would like held for separate discussion from the consent agenda this evening? Okay, anyone virtually, Corey?
There's none.
All right, thank you.
And no input.
All right, thank you. Back to the table, then.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended, except for number 22.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes, 7-0. So item number 22, Representative Eisenhardt, if you would come up, give us your comments, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. State Representative Chuck Eisenhardt, again, 1665 Kaufman Avenue. Looking forward to our meeting next week where we'll have more in-depth discussion regarding your legislative priorities, and you'll hear a little bit from your state legislators. I wanted to bring to your attention a couple of items that you might want to consider either in the near-term future or long-term future for inclusion. You've been very good over the years, the City Council has, in working with state legislators to include items in those policy priorities that relate to some of the things that we've been working on, and that's very much appreciated. And I wanted to bring your attention to a series of things that, briefly bring your attention to a series of things that I've been working on lately, encapsulated in a letter that I emailed to each of you over the last couple of days, and I think have an extra copy here for the clerk if you want to put it into the official record at a future time. I'm a part of a group called the Mississippi River Legislators Caucus, and we have been working on many natural resource issues over the years. One of the things over the last year and a half that I have been particularly paying attention to is some federal legislation called the Recovering America's Wildlife Act that would significantly boost the resources available to the state and through the state to local communities, cities, and counties, et cetera, to invest in habitat preservation and other wildlife-related activities pursuant to the state's Wildlife Action Plan, which the federal government mandated states do. We adopted one at the state level, I believe it was the 2005-06 timeframe, and it was updated in 2015. Fortunately, the resources to actually implement many of those steps have been lacking. We think that since it's a mandate of the federal government, the federal government maybe should put some of those things at our disposal. There have been some issues in this community in recent months that have maybe raised heightened awareness about some of these issues, so that's something you may want to consider communicating to your federal legislators, our federal legislators, regarding our interest in seeing that funding authorization be boosted. A couple of other items that I'm working on through other organizations I've been involved in, I'm on the Natural Resources and Infrastructure Committee of the National State Council of State Legislatures, and we, that body endorsed a resolution supporting the passage of the Recovering America's Wildlife Act. And as part of it, we've encouraged, to the extent that that legislation may include some policy language, giving the states and counties, local governments, the ability to provide for the compliance to the Endangered Species Act and the Migratory Bird Treaty Act. I came to my attention due to recent incidents here in Dubuque related to the destruction of nesting of migratory birds, that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife has maybe one person in the whole state available through the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to provide for compliance with that. So one of the things I'm discussing with my colleagues is what role is there, what ability is there for the service through probably authorizing legislation at the federal level to empower states and local governments to, by extension, provide for concurrent enforcement of those acts where the ability of the federal Fish and Wildlife Service is lacking at a given point in time. So that's another, a second piece that I'd like you to consider, whether or not that's something the city of Dubuque would find an interest in. And related to that, have a discussion, I'll be introducing a bill on this topic. Can't guarantee the future of any bill that I introduce currently in the state legislature, but they're always good discussion tools, I've discovered. So the bill I'm writing will provide for state authorization or state policy for local communities to adopt their own ordinances, to provide for, to adopt by reference the federal regulations, and to provide for civil compliance or enforcement of those regulations if a community decides to adopt such an ordinance. So basically, it would be expanding local control. Imagine that. I'm not sure of the future of that, but again, it's legislation that you may want to consider having your folks down in Des Moines when that comes around, considering adding your name, too. One last thing, in light of the presentation you just made, I've been appointed by the Iowa House of Representatives to represent the body in Austin, Texas, two weekends from now, at a meeting of the NCSL, National Conference of State Legislatures, for a disaster resiliency policy forum. And I'm pretty sure that I was appointed because of this community's history of responding to disasters, not only at the time they happen, but also putting in place the measures to prevent them in the future. So I have a few stories to tell, not only about Dubuque, but about the state of Iowa, and happy to pass along that we have a water warrior perhaps available at your discretion to educate folks in other communities how they could follow the model of Dubuque in preparing and planning for disasters. So I think it's a credit to what this community has done in the past on those issues that I was able to get that appointment for that meeting. That's all I have for you tonight.
All right, thank you, Representative Eisenhardt, for your comments. Intertend a motion, then we can open up for discussion or questions on this item.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file, approve consent item number 22.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Resnick, second by Farber. So any questions or discussion? I think I'll speak on behalf of us then, Representative Eisenhardt. We appreciate you bringing this to our attention. We appreciate the consistent communication that we have. You know, this is something that is, it can be difficult to do, make sure that we stay in touch with each other to be able to have these discussions about the legislative priorities that we do have, and then obviously, when the 100 days starts, those 100 days move fast for the legislative sessions. So we appreciate your continued partnership and discussion on all these items, and I appreciate personally you bringing this to our attention so we can pay some more attention to it, hopefully talk more about it here as the legislative session kicks off, and like you said, at our legislative dinner here next week to really start this legislative season. So with that, all right, we have motion to receive and file and approve the 2024 state legislative priorities. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Motion passes, 7-0.
We will move on to items set for public hearing. We have one, resolution of necessity for the proposed amended and restated urban renewal plan for the greater downtown urban renewal district, version 2023.4, for December 18th, 2023.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Rousell.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolution, and set the public hearing for December 18th.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Rousell, second by Sprank. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Motion passes, 7-0.
We will move on to items set for public hearing. We have one, resolution of necessity for the proposed amended and restated urban renewal plan for the greater downtown urban renewal district, version 2023.4, for December 18th, 2023.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Rousell.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolution, and set the public hearing for December 18th, 2023. Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Rousell, second by Sprank. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Motion passes, 7-0.
We will move on to items set for public hearing. We have one, resolution of necessity for the proposed amended and restated urban renewal plan for the greater downtown urban renewal district, version 2023.4, for December 18th, 2023.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Can I just need a second? There it is. I move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which is to be finally passed, be suspended.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Wally, please.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council, Wally Wernmont Planning Services Director, and I have a presentation that I'll be providing for you. I got pulled up on the screen. Eric or Felicia, I don't know if you guys are going to turn on the side TVs or the main screen by chance. There we go. So the request before you tonight is to amend Zone B of the South Point Plan Unit Development to allow increased lot coverage and reduce front and rear yard setbacks for townhome development. So the image here before you is a vicinity map that kind of shows where is South Point Subdivision. It's located off of Rockdale Road. It kind of wraps around the Table Mound Elementary School and then kind of boxed in between the Table Mound Mobile Home Park and then some of the residential development to the north. This PUD is actually broken up into two different zones. There's Zone A. Zone A allows single-family residential lot development, and then Zone B is a combination of single-family duplexes and townhomes. So the current Plan Unit Development language states that development of property within Zone B of the South Point Plan Unit Development shall be regulated by Section 16-5.5 of the Unified Development Code. That's our R3 moderate-density multifamily residential zoning regulations. That allows anything from a single-family homes to a sixplex. But it says except that lots with two-unit townhomes and duplexes are allowed 50% maximum coverage, 10-foot front yard and rear yard setbacks, and that open decks are allowed a two-foot rear yard setback, but may not encroach on access or utility easements. And with this PUD amendment, what we're looking at doing is just striking the two-unit located in that bold text that's highlighted and, or struck out in red, just to eliminate that to allow just townhomes, and I'll explain why that needs to happen. So currently, if the project out here, if someone wanted to build a six-unit townhome development, the required setbacks would be a 20-foot front yard, 20-foot rear yard, and four-foot side yard setbacks, and we have a zero-lot line requirement. They're allowed to cover 40% maximum coverage. However, if a developer wanted to break those six-unit townhomes apart and just create three, like duplexes or zero-lot line townhomes, they're actually allowed to be 10-foot from the front property line and 10-foot from the rear property line and cover 50% of the property. What they're requesting to do is just to extend those same setback requirements and lot coverage to include townhomes with six units as opposed to what's currently allowed. So I'm just going to toggle back and forth, just to kind of show you currently, if they want to do a six-unit townhome, it'd be a 20-foot rear yard, 20-foot front yard, and if they get approved for the amendment, it would allow them to have this 10-foot and 10-foot, which is the same thing that's allowed for three duplexes, it's just if they're attached, the setback changes. So that's the request before you tonight. The City, the Zoning Advisory Commission did hold a public hearing with regards to this. At the meeting, there was a letter of opposition that was provided from Douglas C. Pierce, and he was representing the property owner at 2453 Rolling Creek. At the Zoning Advisory Commission meeting, there was a couple individuals that got up and spoke with regards to density and green space and setbacks. Our office did meet individually with these. People are in opposition. We encourage them to come into our office later on in the week, and we could sit down and kind of explain to it, because there was some confusion specifically about setbacks and, you know, what's the difference between that, between those different things. So the Zoning Advisory Commission made a recommendation, City Council, by a vote of four to zero, to recommend approval of the Plan Unit Development Amendment, and just a simple majority vote is all that's needed for the City Council to approve the request. I have any questions? I'll be able to answer any questions if you have any, so.
All right. Thank you very much, Wally. We are in a public hearing to consider a request from Aaron Healy to amend Zone B of the South Point Plan Unit Development to allow increased lot coverage and reduced front and rear yard setbacks for townhome development, and the Zoning Advisory Commission is recommending approval. Do we have anyone here to comment on this particular item? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
You do not.
Thank you, Corey.
No input.
Okay. Nothing for the city clerk? All right, back to the table for discussion, then. Mr. Resnick.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. So, Mr. Wernmont, where do the cars go, then, if there's only 10-foot? I mean, what is the parking situation for these buildings?
So each individual, single-family attached structure is required to have one and a half parking spots, which we have to round up to two. So that would include one inside a garage, two inside of a garage, one in the, you know, the driveway. Typically, your parking stall is about 19-foot deep, and we don't allow cars to block the sidewalks, per se, but each one of these will be required to have those two off-street parking spaces. I know an attendance with us tonight is the applicant and the engineer of record. Might be able to speak a little bit more to the actual building construction and layout of the buildings, but I don't know if that helped answer your question, Mr. Resnick?
Well, it does. It raises questions. Can, if they each have two cars, do we have enough parking off-street?
So off-street requirements, they'd be able to park on the street. Now, obviously, when you have both townhomes, you have a lot of curb cuts, right? And that really limits the amount of space that's available. So right now, if we were to, they're allowed to build this right now, if you can see on your screen, it'd be the same scenario than if they were laterally attached. So current rules right now, they could physically build three, the same number of townhouses, it's just they can't be laterally attached to each other, and that's what the setback would change between those, so.
Sure. I get it. I just was wondering if that's enough parking, because I was always taught that two wrongs don't make a right. Just because one is a certain way doesn't mean the other should be that way.
Right.
But, so in your professional opinion, there's adequate parking for these?
So the National American Planning Association has standards for parking, and when we look at single-family home development, which these are literally just single-family attached homes, typically it's two off-street parking spaces. But as we know, families change, right? So you may only have one car, and then you maybe have, your spouse or your significant other may have another vehicle, and then you may have children, and then they start driving. So it's this evolution of, is there enough parking, or are more parking spaces? And actually, to be honest with you, there is a national trend to actually eliminate minimum parking space requirements. The city of Austin and Minneapolis, several other major municipalities, San Jose, are actually eliminating parking requirements, to be honest with you. So based on the national standards for the American Planning Association and what they have, I feel that there is an adequate amount of parking based on those requirements, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank, go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Wally, is there enough stormwater runoff with only 10 feet in the backyard?
Yeah, so what's unique also here, just to kind of explain a little bit to you, single-family homes and duplexes do not require site plans, so they do not go through our DRT process. In this case, in this scenario with the proposed sixplex that they're looking at, six-unit townhome with us, this does go through a site plan review process. So when we look at the entire subdivision, let me pull it up here, subdivision development, we look at overall development in the entire location. So when we do the regional detention facility, which is located, there's a wet pond located out here, it's a nice amenity to the South Point, we look at overall 80% impervious area of the site for it to handle, and then the big thing is we're looking at how do we manage that stormwater, how do we get it to the detention areas and stuff like that. So higher density in the space, there is enough to be able to manage that, and that's being managed through the site plan review process for that, so.
Thank you. Any others? Wally, can you help me understand why these two things are different in the first place? I mean, why do we have different rules for something that is basically, I mean, the way you're explaining it, it's basically going to land in the same spot?
Right. So this is a Plan Unit Development game before by the developer. This has actually been amended twice. So initially, when it came through, the request was for typical setbacks in a Zone B. As they're marketing the properties, they wanted a higher density to cover more land area, so they amended the PUD at that time. When they discussed that, they only amended it based on the language to include two-unit townhomes and not the overall total of townhomes. The reason why we look at Plan Unit Developments, or that was the direction that the developer wanted to do, is it allows flexibility in those regulations. It allows more density, higher concentration coverage in how we manage that. So it's really the direction of the developer, how they wanted to manage and develop their property, is how we arrived at the regulations before us, because the property could just be a straight R3 residential zoning district, but however, they want to do more lot coverage, higher density, and then I know one of the individuals that's part of the developer is a Realtor, and they identified that that was a marketed need, and that was something that they encouraged, look at going this route with the Plan Unit Development.
Got it. So if I'm understanding correctly, the blocks you were showing us, the blue and the green ones there on the screen, that's, those are really specific to this particular Plan Unit Development?
It is. Yeah. So when we say Plan Unit Development, it's a customizable zoning ordinance just specific for this property. So you hear me say PUD a lot. That's basically an amendment or a PUD that's a customized zone. It's a quadruple zoning, so a little bit different than a traditional zoning, which is a straight zoning from an established district to another one. It allows that flexibility to build closer, larger setbacks, smaller setbacks, a lot more lot coverage, and the ability to have that allows these unique developments to happen. So you see them everything from commercial, residential, and industrial, so.
Got it. That's helpful. Thank you, Wally. All right, any other questions? Motion here before us is to receive and file, waive the three readings. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes, 7-0.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Motion here before us is to receive and file, waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Brucell?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Jones?
Farber?
Motion passed at seven to zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Jones, second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Brucell?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Motion passed at seven to zero.
Public hearing number two is amending Dubuque Industrial Center South planned unit development.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Brucell.
I move to receive and file, and further move that a requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended.
Second by Sprank. Motion by Brucell, second by Sprank. Wally, please.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Wally Wernemont, Planning Services Director. The applicant's request to increase the allowed area of directional signs from six square feet to 24 square feet. The Unified Development Code defines directional signs as follows. Directional slash informational sign is an on-premise sign identifying a premise or an activity conducted upon such premises and providing direction for the safe and efficient flow of vehicular and pedestrian traffic to such activity or premises. Directional signs shall include signs marking entrances, exits, parking areas, loading areas, or other operational features of the premises. This application actually is coming from us from the Dubuque Sign Company, who's working with Simmons Pet Food. They rebuilt a new warehouse development, and they're looking at the scale of signage, which currently, right now, it's only six square feet, which is a very small signage when they have a lot of truck traffic that's coming through to the property. They're looking at having larger signage to be a little bit more effective to direct the traffic to where they need to go on the property. We did actually have someone apply for a zoning board of adjustment for variance for a property down on Kerper Boulevard for another very similar request. That is not a PUD down there, that's just a straight zone property. That went to the zoning board adjustment and did not come to this body for that. But at the public hearing, the applicant of Dubuque Sign Company, Keith Wolf, you know, he spoke on behalf of the application. You know that, like I mentioned, they're working with Simmons for the larger signs. And then in addition, we had Diane Bram, who actually is the property owner located directly west of the property, and Jason Tuitt. Our staff members, Jason Duba, presented at the Zoning Advisory Commission, you know, the large sizes of the warehouses and buildings and the property in general. We talked about expressing that the truck traffic coming into the site may beneficial, may benefit more from those larger directional signs than supposed to trying to find smaller signage. They talked about the overall scale, the similar, smaller signs versus the larger signs. They said they work well for, you know, typically we see a lot of directional signage for like drive-through restaurants, so when you come in, you see a small sign, drive-through here, more condensed, commercial development, industrial, very large properties, like how do I know where I need to get to the loading deck? So the zoning board, or Zoning Advisory Commission had that discussion, and by a vote of five to zero, they recommend the City Council approve the request. Now, when they, when we discuss this, it's not specifically just to the Simmons property, it's for all those property owners located in the Dubuque Industrial Center South. So it's expanding to cover that entire area for any future development, so. That's all I have, unless you guys have any questions.
All right. Thank you, Wally. We are in a public hearing to consider a request from Dubuque Sign Company, Simmons Pet Food, to amend the Dubuque Industrial Center South planned unit development to increase the size of directional signage. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, do we have anyone virtually?
No, you don't.
Thank you.
No input.
All right. Back to the table, end for discussion. Seeing none. Motion is to receive and file, waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Brucell?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Motion passed at seven to zero.
Public hearing number three is amending Unified Development Code regarding maternity group home.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the communications, and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which is to be finally passed be suspended.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Back to Wally, please.
Yes, third time's a charm, right? No. Wally Wernemont, Planning Services Director. So the request before you tonight is to amend the Unified Development Code to include a definition of maternity group home and list maternity group home as a permitted use in all residential, office residential, and commercial zoning districts. So the current Unified Development Code standards allows a maternity group home as a group home as defined by our UDC, and a group home is any group of persons not meeting the definition of family and occupying a single dwelling unit, living together as a single household keeping unit, but would not include a boarding or rooming house. Our current Unified Development Code requires that conditional use be obtained for these group homes, which are only allowed in an R3 and an R4 or an OR district. So you may be familiar with this request. This did come before you for rezoning requests, and they did a conditional rezoning on the property. This did go before the zoning board adjustment. Zoning Board of Adjustment made a decision based on feeling that there would be an impact and denied that request for the conditional use permit. So they're actually looking at coming before you to amend the Unified Development Code. And why is that? So Iowa State Code, Chapter 41422, which is the city zoning portion of the state code, establishes zoning requirements for a family home, which is the state's equivalent to a group home in the Unified Development Code. I'm not going to read through all this information, but there's quite a bit of information here. But the key here is that the state law requires a city to consider a family home as a residential use of property and shall allow a family home as a permitted use in residential zones. The definition here, based on family home, involves with a community-based residential home, which is licensed as a residential care facility and as a child foster care facility to provide room and board, personal care, habilitation services, and supervision in a family environment, and this is the key, exclusively for not more than eight persons with a developmental disability or a brain injury. So pregnant teens do not, is not a, this is not a disability. So pregnancy is not defined by the state by as a pregnancy, so they would not be the definition of a family home. So the proposed text amendment is to allow the maternity group home as a permitted use in all residential, office residential, and commercial districts. The definition that has been provided by the applicant is maternity group home is a community-based residential home, providing room and board, supervision, training, education, and personal support in a family environment for up to four women who are either pregnant or have given birth within the last 24 months and their children. Such a site may also include both overnight room accommodations and office space for staff to provide and administer such a service. And these will be located in all those before-mentioned residential, office residential, and commercial districts. The Zoning Advisory Commission held a public hearing, they had discussion with regards to the maternity group home. They indicated that it's very similar to an existing family home, it's just that pregnancy doesn't get counted as a disability. There is the applicant presented before the commission talking about specifically how they're being regulated in using the property. The commission did have discussion about, should we limit it to four, or should we allow eight, because eight's allowed by family group home. There was some discussion with regards to, this is very similar to the family group home, impact-wise. So after their discussion, by a vote of five to zero, the Zoning Advisory Commission recommends approval of a tax amendment, and a simple majority vote is necessary to approve this tax amendment. That's all I have, unless you guys have any questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Wally. We are in a public hearing to consider a request from Bill Beaver, Mary's Inn Maternity Home, to amend the Unified Development Code to include a definition of maternity group home and to list maternity group home as a permitted use in all residential, office residential, and commercial zoning districts. Do we have anyone here to address us on this item this evening? And I'll remind everyone, as you come up, just name an address, please, and then you can move that, yep. It does move up and down, yep.
Yeah, thanks for being tall. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff. My name is John Freund, my address is 1005 Main Street here in Dubuque. I feel like everyone here pretty much understands what the issues are, and I think Mr. Wernemont did a fantastic job summarizing things. I don't feel the need to rehash everything, but I just wanted to point out that this, had we considered this in the first place, instead of going the route of trying to rezone one specific property, this is definitely the route that we would have gone if we had maybe taken a little more time to think about it. As you can see, it was a five to zero vote from the Zoning Advisory Commission. The last time we came before you for the specific property on Churchill Drive, it was unanimous decision, and the only place where we faltered was in front of the zoning board of adjustment. So I think, I think that all of you probably have the information that you need, and I don't feel the need to beat a dead horse on that. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you have, but I think that the application and what we're seeking is, it's narrow from the standpoint that the definition we provided for a maternity home is not intended to be very broad and include a whole bunch of corollary measures or other organizations. This was finely tuned to basically define what it is that Mary's Inn does on a daily basis. So with that, we are asking for your support. I think unanimous support would be great, again, and I'll turn it over to you to ask me any questions, and if I can't answer, we have the same lineup that we've had in the past. Bill Beaver, the board chair of Mary's Inn, is here, and Colleen Paznik, who is the executive director of Mary's Inn, she could also answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Freund. Well, if we have questions, we'll get them to you after we have the closed public hearing here. Anyone else here to address us on this item this evening? I see no one else here. Anyone virtually?
No.
Okay.
No input.
All right. Then I'll bring it back to the table for discussion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Question for Wally. From understanding that state action would automatically make like an area residential care group home eligible to be anywhere without any action from us or anybody else, because I was coming here tonight excited about this, this is the right way to fix this, and thinking we should do this for all group homes, but it looks like that's already been done. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. So you're exactly what, your statement is correct, yep.
Okay. So I think, Mr. Mayor, my preference would be to make this like the other homes and use eight as a number instead of four, or to just define them as a family home consistent with code.
Can I, I'm going to follow up on that, because I'm a little confused on this point, actually. The, so on one of your first slides here, let's see, it's number, slide number two. Oh, no. Okay, maybe I read wrong. That's my apology. So, okay, so a group home, which the state calls a family home, is actually permitted in any zoning district throughout?
So the confusion lies in the definition of a family home. So the state doesn't have a definition for group home, they just define family home. Our code has a definition for group home. Group home does not include a family home discussion. So what we're looking at doing is amending our Unified Development Code to allow a maternity group home as a permitted use in those zones. So as you read through the definitions, the key here is that we're preempted by state law for a family home, and the family home has to be directly related to an individual with a developmental disability or a brain injury. So even if it was called a group home, that would be exempted from our current regulations, which is the case. They're exempted, they're just permitted their rights. So you were talking like an ARC home, for instance. However, because of the pregnancy is not considered a disability, we're defining that very specifically, like Mr. Freund has indicated, it's very narrow, they didn't want, you know, four individuals, it's very specific to their existing operation. And by doing so and having that in there, it allows them as a permitted use. I would recommend that we stay with their definition as opposed to just trying to include them in like a whole definition of a family home, because currently, right now, in our ordinance, we don't define family home in the Unified Development Code. It's just exempted by state law, so.
Okay. Thanks, Wally. Mr. Jones, did you have anything else to add?
I'm fine with that. I don't want to slow this down in any way. It's already been derailed when I don't think it should have been once, and especially after unanimous vote coming from this table. So, yeah, let's just get it fixed, and if we want to do something later, we can do something later to fix it some more.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Brucell.
Thank you. I, too, am in support of just correcting this language that seems to be the only stumbling block that held this back in the past. And I kind of liked a letter, a line that was in the letter from the, I think it was from the Zoning Advisory Commission, and it just says, "They don't want to disrupt the neighborhoods, they want to blend into the family environment and operate as a family." And I think this, this does that, so I'm in support of that.
Thank you, Ms. Brucell. Mr. Resnick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just quickly, I agree that four is the right number, because of course, four expected women will hopefully have at least four more, so there could be eight or more at one time at this home. So I think, I think that's the right number, and, but I appreciate you bringing that up, Mr. Jones. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber, go ahead.
And I am welcome back to us, and just very much appreciate the fact that you continue to be welcoming and supportive of our community and our diversity, so I'm very pleased to be able to vote for this again tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Wethel.
I am grateful for your perseverance and your compassion and your vision, so thank you for continuing to bring this to us so that we can do what I feel is the right thing. Additionally, I'm very glad to vote for something that notes that pregnancy is not a disability, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wethel. I have a question, Wally. So will an organization like Mary's Inn have to come before the zoning board after this? I mean, if this is done, then they're able to look for a place that suits their needs in any zoning district within the city, correct?
Any residential, office residential, commercial zoning district that's defined in there, yes.
Right.
So they're permitted, they're permitted by right for that, so, yeah. So no conditional use, not coming back for the Zoning Advisory Commission, City Council, or a zoning board adjustment. They're just flat-out permitted by right.
Okay. All right. Okay. Well, I think, I mean, based on the last vote we had at this table, I think it's pretty clear where we stand on this, and I don't hear anything different than that, so I, too, appreciate the fact that we've been able to come to a good conclusion on this and find a way forward for Mary's Inn and other places like them. I think this is a good fit for what we need here in the city of Dubuque. Okay, well, the motion here on the table is to receive and file and waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Brucell?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Motion passed at seven to zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Brucell?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Pass at seven to zero.
Public hearing number four is resolution adopting the proposed urban renewal plan for the Emory Urban Renewal District.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending City Council adopt a resolution creating an urban renewal plan for the Emory Urban Renewal District to include the below described area and any other applicable projects located in the district as necessary. The district would include property adjacent to Radford Road, south of Pizza Ranch, located at 2020 Radford Road. The developer, St. Michael Development Group, is proposing to build a 48-unit mixed-income housing facility along Radford Road. Radford Road. The building will be three stories with a surface parking lot and an outdoor children's play area. A mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units will be available with a range of affordable rents based on county median income and the Affordable Housing Tax Credit Program. There will be significant positive impact from the proposed development. The new housing development will provide much-needed affordable housing in an area of town where currently little exists. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council adopt a resolution creating an urban renewal plan for the Emory Urban Renewal District. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here. Anyone virtually?
Nothing virtually.
Thank you. Cory?
No input.
Thank you very much, Adrian. All right, back to the table for any discussion. Seeing none. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number five is resolution approving a First Amendment to Development Agreement by and between the city of Dubuque, Iowa and 799 Main LLC providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations pursuant to the development agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Wethel.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second. Got a motion by Wethel, second by Resnick. Mic, please.
Thank you. City manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic development director Jill Connors is recommending city council adopt the attached resolution approving a development agreement by and between the city of Dubuque and 799 Main LLC providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations. 799 Main LLC intends to rehabilitate the structure to revitalize the first-floor commercial space and create 36 new market-rate rental units in the upper stories. The project will utilize historic tax credits with the remainder of the funding being a combination of private and public financing. The First Amendment to the Development Agreement increases the previously awarded tax increment financing rebates from 10 years to 15 years. This amendment is in keeping with recent city council action further incentivizing housing creation projects in the greater downtown that have not yet been completed. The Development Agreement continues to require the developer to accept applications from prospective tenants with housing choice vouchers issued under, under the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Section 8 program, or a similar program, that are otherwise qualified prospective tenants. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council adopt the attached resolution approving a development agreement by and between the city of Dubuque, Iowa and 799 Main LLC providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here. Anything virtually, Cory?
Nothing.
Thank you.
No input.
All right. Thank you very much, Adrian. Back to the table for any discussion, then. Seeing none here. Motion is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number six is resolution approving a development agreement between the city of Dubuque, Iowa and Vanguard Enterprises Incorporated for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations pursuant to the development agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Sprank. Mic, please.
Thank you. City manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic development director Jill Connors is recommending city council adopt the attached resolution approving a development agreement between the city of Dubuque and Vanguard Enterprises Incorporated providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations. The key elements of the Development Agreement include the following. One, the developer must construct an expansion of not less than 30,000 square feet with a cost of approximately $1.5 million. Two, Vanguard Enterprises must retain its current 13 full-time positions and create 10 new jobs by October 1, 2026. The 23 jobs must be retained through the term of the Development Agreement. Number three, Vanguard Enterprises will receive 10 years of tax increment financing incentives in the form of semi-annual rebates. These incentives are calculated in relation to the number of jobs committed in the Development Agreement. Tax increment financing incentives are not estimated to exceed $271,470. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council adopt the attached resolution approving a development agreement between the city of Dubuque, Iowa and Vanguard Enterprises Incorporated providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item?
I don't know how to work this, so I think I can get you.
You're good right there, yeah.
Does that work?
Yep.
All right. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff. My name is Dan McDonald, and I'm here tonight to represent Greater Dubuque Development located at 900 Jackson Street here in Dubuque, Iowa. I just wanted to go on record, on behalf of our organization and the applicant, and respectfully thank you for your consideration and ask for your approval of this development agreement. Additionally, I want to thank your city staff who have been very helpful throughout this process. Many of these projects have, how do I say it, long tails. We've been working on this for a few years, and it's nice to see it come to fruition. The company president and owner, J.B. Priest, wanted to be here tonight. He had to travel out of state for some unexpected family business, so you got stuck with me. So I want to thank you, and again respectfully request that you approve this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dan, for your comments. Any others? Anything virtually, Cory?
No.
Thank you.
No input.
All right. Thank you. Back to the table for discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, look, that's two in a row, two, we have two more development successes here. And it points out that we do it with partners, such as Greater Dubuque Development Corporation and others. I think it's proof we're growing and it's showing. And I think there's a, a lot more coming, and it's just an exciting time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Resnick.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
I haven't gotten anything quite as good as growing and showing, but this is one of my favorite things, too. This is a longstanding Dubuque manufacturing company that's creating great products and, and growing and growing and growing. Can't wait to help them grow.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Jones. All right. Well, motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number seven is approval of a lease agreement by and between the city of Dubuque, Iowa and the Dubuque Arboretum Association Incorporated.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprank.
A motion by Russell and a second by Sprank. Mic, please.
Thank you. City manager Mike Van Milligan. Leisure services director Marie Ware is recommending city council adopt a resolution approving a lease agreement between the city of Dubuque and the Dubuque Arboretum Association Incorporated. The city's 25-year lease with the Dubuque Arboretum Association termed in June of 2017 and auto-renewed for another 25 years. Steve Faisal, park division manager and leisure services, excuse me, leisure services director Marie Ware worked with the Dubuque Arboretum Association staff and board to create a new comprehensive 25-year lease that creates more clarity of the roles and responsibilities of each party and maps to aid in this management. The lease has been reviewed and approved by senior council Barry Lindahl. The proposed lease has also been reviewed, approved, and signed by the Dubuque Arboretum Association. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council adopt a resolution approving a lease agreement between the city of Dubuque, Iowa and the Dubuque Arboretum Association Incorporated. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here. Anything virtually? No input there? Okay. Back to the table for any discussion. Seeing none there. I want to thank leisure services staff for their work on this, along with the arboretum. I like the idea that we have sat down to make a more comprehensive lease for them to make sure that everybody's doing and showing what they want to on this. So that's great. All right. Motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number eight is Sue Green HVDC Link Project Co. LLC franchise agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting on which it is to be finally passed, be suspended.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Farber. Mike, I'm coming to you for this or straight to Barry? All right. Barry, you're up.
Thank you, Barry Lindahl, senior counsel, city attorney's office. I told my wife I had to attend a public hearing for Sue Green tonight, and she said, "Who's Sue Green?" Right? Okay. Anyway, I'm very pleased to recommend to you tonight the adoption of the ordinance granting to Sue Green HVDC Link Project Co. LLC, a 25-year franchise agreement to construct a transmission system for the transmission of electricity in city right-of-way. I have with me tonight Raj Rajan, who is vice president and project developer for this project. He's a professional engineer, as well as attorney Lisa Aggermonte. She's counsel to the, the project. Raj reminded me that we've been working on this for five years. And the, the group was myself, city manager, city attorney, Steve Brown, Dave Lyons, and other central city staff. Raj has a presentation that he will make in a few minutes, but I want to make a couple of general comments about the project first. As you probably know from the information I've been providing to you over this five-year period, this is a 349-mile, 525-kilovolt underground transmission line from western Iowa into Illinois. And this is a $2.5 billion project. The transmission line will be underground, located in railroad right-of-way owned by the Canadian Pacific and Canadian National. Now, they do have to cross or underground a number of city streets, which is the reason that a city franchise agreement is required. The general terms of this agreement are very similar to the franchise agreements that we have now with the gas and electric utilities, Black Hills, Interstate Power, and McCoqueta Valley Electric Cooperative, with two very significant differences. First of all, there's no franchise fee, because Sue Green will be transmitting electricity and not selling it. So there's, there's no revenue on which we could base a franchise fee, which we do for our other, other three utilities. The second major difference is that Sue Green has agreed to collate, co- co- co-locate fiber conduit for the city from John Deere Road essentially down to Julian Dubuque Drive, with the exception of a two-mile segment from about Seventh Street South, which is controlled by Canadian National, and they have not yet been able to negotiate an agreement with Canadian National to co-locate city fiber. But that, that's going to create a very valuable fiber conduit north to south backbone route, backbone route through the city. And I, just to give you an idea of what that means to us, just to quote from my memo to you, "The conduit route will provide multiple fiber optic pathways between the Julian Dubuque plant north of Dubuque to the Port of Dubuque where the CN two-mile stretch begins and south of the CN stretch within municipal limits, creating new opportunities for collaboration on public-private partnerships along with the increasing ability to provide redundant service connections to city facilities. It will also expedite future city projects by creating multiple fiber optic pathways under the rail lines that run throughout the city of Dubuque. We estimate the value, short-term value of this project to the city is over $1 million." Prior to this public hearing tonight, Sue Green was required as a part of the ordinance to hold a public informational meeting, which they did back in 2020. If approved tonight, the engineering plans, I believe, are anticipated to be finalized in December of this year. But construction won't actually occur until probably 2025 to 2027, because there are still a number of regulatory provision, or requirements that they have to, to get approval for. So at this point, I'll ask Raj to give you his presentation.
Thank you, Barry. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council members. The presentation I'm going to give to you is pretty much in line with the content that we presented at the public information meeting in August of 2021 within the city. And we also held public information meetings as part of the Iowa Utilities Board in Dubuque County, and those ended up being virtual because of the COVID situation that we were in. So what I will go through is what the project is about, what exactly we're going to do within Dubuque, and in particular, the additional infrastructure work that we're going to do that's specific to the city of Dubuque. What we're building is actually an interregional transmission line, and it's a merchant transmission line. It's privately funded by venture capital, private investment, and it is a line that will basically be paid for by people who use the line. The primary reason is to connect two regional electric grids, MISO, which is the Midwestern grid, we're in what is called MISO North, and north-central Iowa from Mason City, and into Plano, Illinois, which happens to be, if you look at the map on the right, part of the northeastern grid. So it's called the PJM grid because it's used to stand for Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and Maryland. But of course, the ComEd territory, which is essentially greater Chicagoland in northern Illinois, is entirely part of that regional grid. We're connecting to two strong grid interconnection points, one of the strongest connection points in the MISO grid near Mason City, and the strongest and westernmost connection point in the PJM grid outside Plano, Illinois. Why are we doing this? The reason we are doing this is Iowa, particularly western and north-central and northwestern Iowa, have abundant wind resources that can generate electricity at an extremely low cost. And it, the demand is primarily in urban centers and industrial centers, and in the northeast with states that have made very strong commitments to use renewable energy, but don't have either the real estate or the wind resources to actually put them in. And the way we can deliver this, it's similar to the analogy is the agricultural sector, where we can grow corn and soybeans much more efficiently than the rest of the world can. So we grow it and we export it. So this is an opportunity for us to treat another commodity of the future, which is clean electricity, and to export it and build the economy here in Iowa through that export business. And the reason that the regional grids themselves have not figured out is they have to do cost allocation, which is a very complicated process, right when you do it within your own region. And when you have to do it across region, it gets even more complicated, because the value proposition for the exporting region is quite different from the value proposition for the importing region, which is why merchant projects like us come in with private investment and recover the, basically, it's like a toll road for electrons. We, anybody who uses our transmission line, they will basically pay for it. And what I have here, I want to show you about a approximately four-minute video that really walks through how we're going to build the project, and you can see the innovation that's involved in this project that we've been developing for over five years. And it looks like the, I'm not sure if the video is gonna, the audio is gonna work here. I don't know if IT can get the audio to work, but if not, I've left a voiceover here. So it's basically to take our renewable electricity from the upper Midwest and take it into the urban centers in Chicago. It is the first underground transmission line that's going to build of this magnitude in, in North America. And it's basically, oh, it looks like we're getting IT help to get the audio. Thank you.
Not IT, so no guarantees. I thought you were doing a pretty good job with the, the voiceover.
The voiceover? No, there's someone with a much better voice.
Thank you, Randy.
Sue Green HVDC Link is an innovative new model for electric power transmission development and construction. The proposed project will change the way transmission is built in the U.S., while connecting abundant renewable energy resources in the Midwest to new markets. Sue Green will be the first transmission project in North America to be installed underground along existing transportation corridors. This will minimize environmental and physical impacts and eliminate visual impacts. The same model is successfully used to build America's fiber optic networks. Sue Green will follow existing railroad and Department of Transportation rights of way, stretching from the midwestern U.S. grid in north-central Iowa, running along the Mississippi River, and ending in the eastern U.S. grid in northern Illinois. This project will employ three distinct methods to build the underground transmission line: open trench, jack-and-bore, and horizontal directional drilling, HDD. During open trenching, Sue Green will dig an approximately three-foot-wide, five-foot-deep trench and will bury two eight-inch diameter conduits. The trench will be backfilled, creating a duct bank with a minimum three-foot ground-level clearance. Once the duct banks are in place, native soil will be replaced and restored. At this point, cross-linked polyethylene insulated cables, each about five inches in diameter, will be pulled through the conduits. These installations require no coolant fluid. Once in place, the trench will remain closed for the life of the project. When a sensitive habitat, existing road, or existing utility needs to be crossed, Sue Green will utilize the second construction method, the jack-and-bore method. In this method, crews bore under the area, placing both conduits within a single bore. The final method, horizontal directional drilling, is used when crossings are required to be wider or deeper. This includes areas such as wetlands or rivers. After drilling and widening the hole, the conduits and casing will be pulled from one side of the river to the other. Both jack-and-bore and horizontal directional drilling can be executed with no environmental interruption or surface impact. Following construction, the land along the project corridor is returned close to its original state, and the line is put into service. The Sue Green team understands the importance of existing infrastructure along the proposed route. route, including drain tile, which is an integral part of Midwestern farming activities. When intersecting existing drain tile, smaller tiles will be cut and capped to allow the trench to be dug and the conduits to be installed. Once conduits are in place, the tiles will be repaired and the trench will be filled with existing native soil. Depending on current use and flow rate of drain tile, conduits may be placed under larger tiles without cutting. Sue Green's partnership with the railroad will limit impacts to the environment and neighboring communities by reducing the need to remove trees, minimizing sensitive habitat disturbance, and eliminating visual impacts of overhead towers and cables. The Sue Green HVDC Link will create thousands of jobs during construction and dozens of permanent jobs to maintain the transmission system. Additionally, Sue Green will reduce existing transmission constraints, enhance grid reliability and resiliency, and enable the development of additional renewable energy projects in the Midwest. The Sue Green team looks forward to working with landowners, policymakers, and local communities to rethink how we build the transmission grid of the future.
Thank you. If a picture is worth a thousand words, I guess a video is worth a million. This is our development team. So before I jump into talking about the roles of the key players here, I will mention that the reason we're building this project and railroad corridor is one of the single biggest concerns that landowners have is taking productive agricultural land out of service for building transmission lines. We are addressing that head-on. The reason we're building it underground is because a railroad will not allow an overhead transmission line to be right next door. And also, we're building it underground because it is extreme weather resilient. Extreme weather events are becoming more and more common, whether it's a tornado or an ice storm or any other extreme weather event that can pull down a transmission line. So we want to build a transmission line that's not, that does not have to be rebuilt over and over, over its useful life. And that's, that's, the third concern is people have, worry about their rural viewshed. They don't want to see massive transmission cables hanging around with towers in their backyard when they look out, and this addresses that, too. So the development team itself, in the first row you see are the primary investors in the project. Copenhagen Infrastructure Partners, who are primary investors from Denmark, who funded many offshore wind projects in Denmark, which is a country where at times they can do, go an entire month with just renewable power from wind. Aetenge Re is a company that is building a similar project of long-distance transmission from upstate New York into New York City, and this is the second big transmission project that they're involved in. And PPL is Pennsylvania Power and Light, which is an electric utility in the PJM market. And two other investors are Siemens Energy, which has developed all the technology that we are implementing. They're building several underground HVDC projects in Germany, and this is the first one that they're going to do in North America. And Jengoli Power is a construction company that is also a minority investor in the project. Mortensen is a, an EPC contractor based out of the Twin Cities, and they do a lot of work in the clean energy, renewable energy sector. They will be building the two converter stations at the two ends. And Prispian is the largest HVDC cable manufacturer in the world, based out of Italy, Milan, Italy, but they actually acquired a cable plant to, for the first time, build insulated and shielded HVDC cables in North America in South Carolina, at a plant in South Carolina. So our goal also is to use this project to ensure a lot of the manufacturing and supply chain for technology that could become the future for transmission. And we are working with four major railroads, Canadian Pacific, now Ca- Canadian Pacific Kansas City, and Canadian National are the two railroads, of course, here, right here in Dubuque. And they are the only two railroads. So CN is a small two-mile section that they own, that CP operates, but CN owns the tracks underneath, and so we have licensing agreements with both of them. And in Illinois, there are sections where to jump from one end of the, one, one side of CP's tracks and get to the converter station, we have to go through a north-south section with OmniTrax and two sections with BNSF, which is also a Class 1 railroad. And we have agreements with all of these railroads to build our power line along that right-of-way. WSP is the environmental contractor, working on all the surveys and permitting. And Power Engineers is the electrical engineering contractor, and Hatch is the owner's engineer who will finally approve all, all the engineering details on the project. As I mentioned earlier, and Barry mentioned upfront, it's about approximately 350 miles, and it's 525,000 volts, which is the first 525 KV long-distance transmission line, again, that will be built in North America. And the technology used to convert from AC to DC on both ends, it's called voltage source conversion, or VSC, which is also the first major application of VSC technology in North America, although it's been applied in many places around the world, by Siemens in particular. The cables, we refer to them as cables and not lines, because unlike overhead lines, which are just bare conduct, metal conductors, these are insulated and shielded, and they will be installed inside conduits, as you saw in that video. The other advantage of HVDC transmission is there's very little power loss when you transmit, which is why you can put it underground, because power loss translates into heat generation. You cannot put 525 KV AC lines underground because they will generate too much health, heat, and they'll basically melt the cable. So we, the line losses are about a fourth of what they are with AC line, so more of the power that's injected in Mason City will end up being delivered in Plano. So for a long, long-term operations, it's a lot more effective. Construction start is planned for late 2023, Q3 of 2023, with completion of construction before the end of 2029. We have, I'm responsible for all the development permitting on the project. We have worked with, these are all the agencies we are working with. And the Army Corps of Engineers is the lead federal agency. Through them, work with the Fish and Wildlife Service, Iowa DNR, Illinois DNR, Illinois EPA, State Historic Preservation Offices. We've completed all the environmental surveys, water body, wetland surveys, threatened and endangered species biological resource surveys, and cultural resource surveys along the entire project corridor, prepared the reports, submitted them to the agencies, and going through the review process. We have to get several permits besides the environmental permits. We, of course, had to get a permit from the Iowa Utilities Board for the rural segments of the project, which is over 200 miles, and we got approval from the IUB this past September for, for our project, for the rural segment. We have, of course, 24 municipalities we are going through, and we have to get municipal franchises, and this lists all the other permits that we have to get. The franchise process, I won't go through the wording here, but as Barry talked about earlier, we don't have customers here, so there's no franchise fee, but we are very committed to supporting communities along the project corridor, particularly with the infrastructure. We, we worked with the Public Works Department, identified all the underground infrastructure here, agreed on vertical clearances, horizontal clearances, and we're going to go underneath all your existing infrastructure. So if you have to do any maintenance, you will not disrupt the operation of our line. But we were even more interested in anything that could be complementary, which is where the whole subject of fiber conduit co-location came in, and we'll talk a little bit about that. Just to give you an update on the status, these are the 24 municipalities. Twelve of them have approved the municipal franchises, and all of them have done so unanimously. And the other 12, we are currently under negotiations with varying degrees, depending on what the local conditions are and what the requirements are for the municipalities, and we're trying to figure out how we could help with their existing infrastructure besides getting permission for our infrastructure. The project corridor in Dubuque, this is, so you can see, starting from the northwestern end and to the southeastern end, a significant chunk of it in Dubuque County is actually through the city of Dubuque. And the, these are the segments that I showed just north of the city and south of the city that are highlighted, which have already been approved by the Iowa Utilities Board. And within the city of Dubuque, there are two sections I want to draw your attention to apologize, it's hard to see the highlighting here, but there's a yellow highlight, which is the Canadian National section. It's about five and a half miles, then there's a green section that is owned by Cana- sorry, Canadian Pacific. And then there's a two, two-mile section that is highlighted in green, that's owned by Canadian National. And then another half-mile section to, to the south of the municipal boundary, that's again owned by Canadian Pacific. And what we are going to install with the project is basically a bundle of conduits, what's called a microconduit bundle, that, that will allow the city to pull fiber later as needed, along, and we'll also install vaults where you can peel off and connect it to the existing and any new fiber infrastructure you build elsewhere in the city. And this is, this is what we're going to, initially, Canadian Pacific said the city, let the city of Dubuque negotiate with us directly, because this has nothing to do with your power transmission, but we continued to work with them because we recognize how important it is to do it at the same time. And just a few months, a couple of weeks, a few weeks ago, they gave us permission and to negotiate, to sign the document to give us permission to co-locate the fiber conduit. And that's when we came back to the city and we said, we can do it for the CP section. The reason Canadian National cannot do it is because they have already issued a exclusive fiber agreement with, to a telecommunications company, so even though they would like to do it to support the project, they're not in a position to do it contractually because they have an exclusive with a, with a telecom company. We have done an economic impact study. Professor David Loomis at Illinois State University in Bloomington Normal, he, he put together this economic impact study back in September of 2020. And back then, the project was to generate over $2.2 billion in economic output in Iowa and Illinois, about a billion of that in Iowa. Now, that was back in 2020, and there have been significant increases in capital costs for the project, like there for infrastructure projects everywhere. So the economic impact from how much money we're going to spend is going to go up, and also the property taxes associated with the real property that the state will assess and that will ultimately come down to all the jurisdictions will also go up because we're going to spend a lot more. And the estimate back in this, September of 2020 was that Dubuque County, all the taxing entities will generate over $5.6 million in revenue, property tax revenue from the project over 25 years. Now, the project has a useful life, 50, sometimes in, in Europe, actually, they're expecting the useful life for HVDC transmission to be more like 60 to 80 years. But you can only franchise it for 25 years. We have to come back to you for renewing the franchise, so all the economic impact analysis were only done for the 25-year period. And the city of Dubuque itself will generate over $470,000 over the 25-year period, and of course, which will continue once we renew the franchise after the 25 years. It's a project that the railroads like because they can monetize the railroad right-of-way where they have exclusive rights in, with, with another business model that is the future. Renewable developers like it because Iowa has huge potential. We have tapped into only 3% of the wind power generation potential in Iowa. There's 97% available, and we can't use it all in Iowa, so we have to look for markets that we can export it to. Retail customers in the Northeast and in Chicagoland like it because they have access to lower-cost renewables that can be generated and delivered to their location. Commercial and industrial customers in particular have a lot of commitments that they made to renewables that they cannot meet with renewables that are generated just in Illinois. So they're looking to their neighboring states to provide them with additional resources. It helps meet the state clean energy goals, where there are goals like Illinois has, and grid operators particularly like it because HVDC transmission brings a lot of stability to the grid. So, and this is a bidirectional line, so if you remember the polar vortex a couple of years ago, and we actually ran short of power in the Midwest, and we had to import it, and there was, there was just enough back then. And electricity demand is going up, and adding this, having this ability to import power in an emergency back from the Northeast provides additional stability from a resilience and extreme weather perspective. Labor unions in particular like this project because it is analogous without additional training, because it's more of a civil type of project, like trenching and drilling, that replaces oil and gas pipelines. So they don't have to retain the staff as we retire fossil fuel industry jobs, and they can transition without additional training into jobs like this. And communities and landowners, as I mentioned, like this project. I will stop there, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Anything else from you, Barry? Are we, we good? All right. Well, we are in a public hearing to consider city council adopt an ordinance granting a 25-year franchise to Sue Green HVDC Link Project Co. LLC, Sue, also known as Sue Green or Project, for a transmission system for the transmission of electric energy and communication facilities in the city of Dubuque. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, anything virtually, Corey?
No input.
All right. Back to the table for discussion, then.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Farber.
So I used to be in the telecom industry, and if I were still there, I would have a lot of conduit envy right now. Because, as you know, it's very hard to get the right-of-way along the railroad ties, and that's always a significant issue because of the fact that the linear capabilities are there already nationwide and how easy it is to tap into that. And I'm very pleased that you're giving us some extra opportunity for fiber con- within that conduit, which I think will aid in some of our higher-speed capabilities and also reaching some of our areas within the city that really do need higher speed and better brand bandwidth or initial bandwidth to those that are underserved or not served at this point. So I just wanted to share the envy, and congratulations, this is really an awesome, very complete, I, I think, application, and what a way to use our renewable energy as well. And I didn't realize that Iowa was so prolific in our wind and in our solar.
We've been in the top five in the country for a long time.
Yeah, so thank you for coming to Iowa farmland, because I think that's part of where you're going. So thank you, I appreciate that. I just wanted to share the envy story, because I think that's so important for us to have an understanding of what it is you're doing and how fortunate you are to have that right-of-way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wethel.
I grew up in a small municipality along the river, one in which the railroad crossing is where you will go, in Sebula, Iowa. And so although I advocate, of course, for my neighbors here in Dubuque, I know that in Sebula, we don't have the benefit of Senior Council Lindahl to help those small municipalities. So out of curiosity with our neighbors, can you share just briefly how you're going about it, because they certainly don't have the resources to commit to what we've been able to do with these years of dedication and, and intense collaboration?
Yes, that's a great question. Of course, Dubuque is the biggest city that the project is crossing, and we have the most infrastructure interactions in Dubuque. And so, and, and we wanted to be able to address that as, right up front, which is why we engaged with Dubuque back in 2018. We have been talking to the other municipalities. Sebula, of course, is very critical because we are crossing the Mississippi River, and the question often that we face in the smaller municipalities is, why are you even coming to us? If you're going in the railroad corridor, why do you even need us? And, and we have to remind them that the state statute requires us to get a municipal franchise because we are a power transmission line, even though we don't have customers here, and that's why we're here, even though we have permission from the railroad to be in the railroad corridor. And in general, we've been very proactive, getting information from them, whatever we can. If they have digital information on existing underground infrastructure, we get it. If not, we will take the, what they have in hard copy and digitize it, and we proactively worked with all the municipalities, big and small, to try and figure out how, how can, how can we do this to minimize any disruption, whether it is traffic management, whether it is underground utility interactions, or even a question of, we, we proactively went and did what's called a, almost, I guess you could call it a good neighbor agreement with adjacent landowners, and actually sought out cooperation agreements with them, because we know that we'll be construct, we'll be doing construction adjacent to their property, but still, it's, it's going to be, we're going to be their neighbors for a while, and we're going to be bringing in equipment and being disruptive. So we engaged with communities, with landowners, adjacent landowners, quite proactively, and that's how we managed to make sure that we are not disrupting any of the activities in the small communities as we worry about the larger communities.
Let me add that we have had, from time to time, requests for copies of our ordinance, which up until now, we were not willing to share because it was not a final agreement. But we are now at a point where we're sharing the agreement with any municipality in Iowa that would like to see it, so. that would like to see it. And it's a great template for other cities, so.
I'm grateful for that work. Thank you.
Yes.
Any others? Well, it's a whole lot of upside, but I feel the responsibility to ask, what's the downside? I mean, do we have one for our, you know, is there a downside that we need to be concerned about for the city of Dubuque or for the residents of Dubuque? I mean, is there going to be disturbance of business as usual or where people live? I mean, this is all in the railroad, I understand, but.
It's, it's all in the railroad and because it's the direct current, it, it really doesn't have, like, for example, people worry about signal interference, static noise and other things that come with alternating current. And if, and which is the reason the railroads won't even allow an alternating current line to be in their corridor because it will interfere with their signal operations. So from that perspective, so one of the biggest concerns that typically people next to transmission line subject, that doesn't exist with direct current line. So it's really, to sum it up, it's business as usual. Once we fill up, whether if we trench it and we close the trench, it's business as usual. And if it's directional drilling, people won't even see it while we are doing the construction. So we will be, you saw the three methods we talked about in the video and we'll probably be implementing all three methods within the city depending on where the infrastructure is, how deep it is. For example, some of your stormwater and sanitary sewer lines run really deep and we, we might be doing directional drilling underneath it. So we won't even open the right of way up with open trenching.
All right. Well, any other discussion, comments? I, I want to echo Ms. Farber's comments. I, I sincerely applaud the, the fact that we're doing the fiber co-location. That's incredibly important to us and, and I really appreciate you working with us and Barry and Kenna in your office doing this, but then also working with the railroads to help us communicate the importance of that, to be able to make that happen. It's, I mean, that's a major win for the community.
And we're glad, we're glad it worked out. Just your question about getting permission from the railroad, we've been working with the railroad for over 10 years, actually most 15 years now with the concept. They said, come back to us when you can go underground and we went back to them when we could go underground.
That's great. You know, sometimes you, when you're sitting here, you get to make decisions where you can sort of see the future and I feel like that's what we're seeing here. I mean, this is one of those things where when you think about all the ways you've described this, this is a big deal for how we move power from one part of the country to another. And I think, you know, I know that for us, the issue before us tonight is a simple franchise agreement when you really look at it, but at the same time, this is, this is something. I'm looking forward to watching this project in the future. So thank you for all your work on it.
Thank you for recognizing that. Yes, I appreciate it.
All right. Motion before us here is to receive and file and waive the three readings. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
We'll file a consideration and pass it to the ordinance.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Jones, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We will move on to public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
All right. Do we have any public input this evening?
Hello, Jamie Carr, 945 Clark Drive. I'm here tonight to say a few words against the automated speed enforcement that's on the table tonight. And I have a few reasons I'd like to put to you as to why. First, this is about money. The people know it. Let's call this what it is. This is policing for profit. And if you don't believe this, look at some of the revenue that's been generated by some of the other towns in Iowa who have implemented this. Earlier this year, a report was presented to the Iowa State Legislature that looked at some of the fiscal year '22 numbers. Leclerc, Iowa, issued $4.7 million in tickets. This is a town with a population of 4,700 people, so you can do the math. It comes out to an average of $1,000 per person. Des Moines, Iowa, $5 million in citations issued and Cedar Rapids, a whopping $10.7 million in citations. Second, if you get pulled over for speeding by a police officer, they issue the ticket to the driver. The camera can't tell who's driving, so the camera ticket is issued to the title holder of the vehicle. So I can think of several cases where the driver and the ticket holder are not the same person. For example, company cars, loaner cars, rental cars, your buddy needs to borrow your truck for the weekend. The fact that the camera can't ticket the driver should be enough to kill this ordinance. Third, those favoring this proposal will point to the speed study that was done back in July that was presented to you to determine whether or not people are speeding. They tracked about 130,000 vehicles at various locations around town. Supporters of this proposal want to make the connection between speed and accidents. So the question was asked, how many accidents occurred when the data was collected? And the answer is none. Quoting from the chief's memo in your packets tonight, there were no crashes at the locations and times of the data collection. Number four, the biggest winner of this are the camera companies, the camera vendors. A large portion of this fine is going to go to them. Private companies motivated by profit, likely out of state, shipping millions of dollars out of the state of Iowa. Number five, there's no government oversight of these companies and these vendors on the accuracy of their equipment. We don't know if their photo systems are going to be working properly at any given moment in time. Are we just supposed to take their word for it? Number six, the process that's been presented to challenge the tickets is cumbersome. Doing so requires a written challenge on a form specified by and available from the city. You don't have the opportunity to face your accuser in court and a police officer, not a judge, not a jury, will determine whether the citation should be rescinded after reviewing the written challenge. And seven, this just damages the brand of our great city, in my opinion. Dubuque will no longer be known as the key city or the masterpiece in Mississippi, will be thought of as a speed trap town for drivers coming across from Illinois and Wisconsin and tourists who come to visit are going to leave with a bad taste in their mouth when they get home and they get a bill in the mail from the city of Dubuque. And finally, I believe the vast majority of the citizens of this town oppose this as shown by the Chamber of Commerce survey, survey that was taken back in February, it's in your February packets, that found that 90% of the members surveyed of 161 members opposed automated traffic cameras. I, I urge you to look at this before voting for this. You know, these are Dubuques who are voicing their opposition and making arguments against this proposal. These aren't social media trolls, as the chief mentions in his memo. So in summary, we're on a slippery slope with these city managed cameras. There must be hundreds of these things around town. Just recently, you voted to spend $70,000 on automated license plate readers. You know, these track the movements of law abiding citizens. This is something I never thought I'd see in a free society. And now we're talking about speed cameras. I'm sure red light cameras are coming up. There seems to be no end to this. So I urge you tonight to draw a line and vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie, for your comments. Any others this evening? See, no one else here, anything virtually?
You do have one from Daniel Simon of 3519 Eclipse Circle and he would like to speak to action item number four.
Okay. Mr. Simon, you are free to speak.
Mr. Simon, are you there? Are you able to unmute? Mr. Simon did enter some comments into the chat. Now, if you're able to hear us, Mr. Simon, the council doesn't have the chat in front of them, so can't see them now, but I can get them to the city clerk and enter them into the record.
Okay.
Is that be okay?
That, that'll work, yeah. We'll wait for a moment here for Mr. Simon to come on if he's able. Adrian, do we have anything you can?
No input received.
Nothing from the city clerk's office? Okay. All right. We're sorry we're not able to hear you, Mr. Simon, but thank you for your comments. We'll make sure they're entered into the record. Okay. Any other public input this evening? Okay. Seeing none, we can move on to action items, please, Adrian.
Action item number one is 3000 Jackson H&amp;W Building Update.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file.
Second. Motion by Sprank, second by Jones. Mike, please.
In this case, Alexis Steger is the one submitting the update report on the Dubuque Brewing and Malting Building.
Excellent. Turn it over to Alexis then.
Good evening, Mayor and Senator Council, Alexis Steger, Housing Community Development Director. So just wanted to give you a quick update on where we're at with H&amp;W building at the 3000 Jackson side. So back in August, we had received a assessment of that building from WHKS, making sure that it was stable. And in that report, it did let us know that it was a danger to the public in its current condition. There were some structural issues that needed to be addressed immediately. So at that time, we did close off the streets and into the area that's considered the fall zone, sent a letter out to properties adjacent to that property to make sure everyone was aware of the instability that was being, that the building was caused, causing that threat. So basically, we wanted to make sure that all of the public was aware and as safe as possible in its current condition. In your, in the information provided tonight, there've been several orders issued to the owner since then as we find new ways to make sure we're protecting the public. For example, we wanted to first assess, you know, the safety of brick that's falling. So we ordered the owner to erect a fence, which would actually enclose the property to make sure that no one could get in. Prior to that, we did ask that, he boarded up all the windows, but we were, we were finding that there were people that were breaking into areas of the building. So that fence was erected with a barbed wire fence across the top to discourage that entry. We also issued orders saying that we needed to, our WHKS hired structural engineer needed to review anything that was submitted for how they're going to make the building safe. So that's what the order they're under currently is. There's two orders. One is the demolition repair order that was issued and they have 180 days. And then there's the emergency order, which they're trying to address right now. And the emergency order is that they need to structurally address the 10 areas in the report. There's many ways to do that, so they had to submit how. They had, did submit how and that was approved for starting, they started construction. You'll see in some of the pictures that were provided in the packet that they did take down the south facing wall that was creating issues bowing out. On the other side of that, that's towards the courtyard is the other concern. And as they're starting to remove materials, they wanted, the construction company became kind of wary of, hey, if we keep going and remove the roof and the, the towers and turrets as we planned, it may create more instability in that area. So they stopped the work and that's why you've seen there's been a stoppage for a while. They've removed the crane because a crane is rented by the day. So trying to not incur costs while they came up with a new structural bracing system. So currently, the owner has hired an engineer to do the bracing system and design it. And the construction company said, okay, as soon as that's ready, we'll be back on site and can put that up once we've reviewed it. The owner is aware that if, hey, if we can't get an agreement for that company to come in, they have another company, a construction company lined up just in case so that they can continue the, the project as they go. But we do still think that Zinzer, who's the construction company, is going to come on site. We've been having conversations with them. Mike Belmont, the code official, has been in contact with both the owner and contractor on a regular basis to make sure that we're going to continue. Now that we have that bracing system and plate or system being designed, they were looking at those towers again and think that there may be a way to do a netting system, which does happen throughout the U.S. and structures that are similar to this building. And what that netting system can do is make sure that any debris that might fall off of that tower is contained up in the tower area and doesn't fall to the ground, causing that safety issue. So that's the next thing there. That doesn't mean that's the option they're for sure going for, but as they're designing, that's one of the options that they're, they're looking at. Because if we remove them, it might be too unstable to continue the project. So that's where we are right now with that contractor. The engineered design is supposed to be ready before Thanksgiving, so two more days. That's what we've been told. And so we are holding the owner to those, those timelines. We need to see it. So if we're not seeing it, you need to tell us why immediately and we can talk directly to the people he's hired. He has been giving us the names and numbers of those people. Once that's done, he did think that the contractor would be able to be back on site after the holiday. So it would be the next week that he could have them back on site as long as that design is approved for the structural piece of it. So that's where we are today. The order that was issued back in June, I believe it was, that gave the 180 days, that order, the 180 days would be, to be at the first week in December. That 180 days is up. So at, what that does is basically says that at that point, the city could take the option to abate the issue itself. That would be, per Iowa law, then assess the, the amount would then be assessed to the property, just like property taxes are, so they'd be paid as property taxes are paid. That, that's an option. It's not that after 180 days, you have to do that. It just gives you that option to abate it if they're not moving forward. So if something stops on this project, suddenly don't see that there's response, then we would be able to do that. So that'll be the first week in December. And that's all I have for you tonight, unless you have questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Alexis. Let's open it up for questions and discussion. Mr. Sprank.
Not so much a question, more just a kind of a long statement of the frustrations of many business owners and neighbors. I, I want to start by thanking our staff for all the time they spent on this issue and also my neighbors who have had, who've had their patience waiting on the, some progress on this building. Many of us are frustrated to the lack of attention by the building owner. I had asked staff to inform Mr. Emerson that city council is going to be discussing his building. I had hoped he would attend tonight's meeting, at least give his perspective and hear more of his side of the story. Sadly, that wasn't the case. Since the start of stabilization, neighbors and business owners have suffered, first with the temporary street closures slash detours by the, by the movable fencing in the street. Unfortunately, folks just don't want to pay attention and have just been driving through it. Then you guys had to upgrade to concrete barricades and now folks are just driving on people's sidewalks. So they're not happy with that. This is really starting to affect like the copper kettle, for example. I had a lengthy conversation with him, how the last few months have been going. He's had nearly a 30% loss in year-to-date sales due to this ordeal. You know, this is a great established business that's been doing awesome in my neighborhood. I really want to continue to see it to thrive and not just survive this ordeal. Then neighbors are also concerned about the snow removal with the concrete barricades, what's that's going to look like. So there's just a lot of misunderstanding and a lot of safety concerns as well. Folks are wondering when they're going to, when the building will be safe from collapsing. I just feel like we kind of need to do a lot more constructive conversations with property owners regarding this ongoing project. And everybody's looking for a better timeline as to when their properties are safe, as well as addressing the concrete barriers to come up with some better, better solution. And I know we just learned about the falling nets. I hope that's an option that the building owner pursues because everyone's patience is just wearing thin with this. I, my big questions, I want to kind of reach out to council as well as city manager. If for some reason, somewhere along the line, all of a sudden, this property owner says, I can't afford to do this anymore, have we started looking at our legal actions as well as to a plan B as to if, if we get stuck as a city dealing with the deconstruction? Because I literally don't want to dump this on the taxpayers because this guy knew what he bought. He knew he bought a building that was in bad shape and he's not being a good steward to us or to the community, so.
It really is a legal question, which we would pursue.
It really is a legal question, which we would pursue him to take care of either the demolition or deconstruction that would be required, but I'll leave that to the city attorney.
Crown of Bromwell City Attorney's Office, as Alexis mentioned, we would have the right to perform the work and assess it. If the assessment was deconstruction, as you can imagine, the deconstruction of a building of that magnitude is likely to greatly exceed the value that remains once it's deconstructed. There are limits within the Iowa code periodically for assessments as well. You can get, like, a deficiency and things of that nature, but it's likely to be upside down, even following the assessment process. We would explore other remedies, whether there was an option for any breach of contract action or things of that nature as well. But we haven't done a deep dive on that at this point to give you the viability of anything of that nature. Thank you.
But I don't want to offer any false hope that I'm going to recommend the city step in his shoes. The demolition costs are estimated between 1.5 and 3.5 million dollars, and the city doesn't have those resources allocated either. So we would make every effort to pursue against the owner of the building.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sprank. Mr. Jones, did you, you were turning this way?
Yeah. Am I to understand from this letter to the adjacent homeowners that we have people living in their homes who are at risk of getting squashed sleeping on their beds?
So the homes that are on the adjacent side are not on the initial fall zone in, as it was in the report, but would be from when it falls, there could be spraying debris. So although in an area of risk, not the, just their homes will be flattened with them in it. But yes, the letter did inform them that that is a potential for their property, and unfortunately, isn't something that the city can say how they can remedy that.
I have to say, I too am really running out of patience and desire to see this saved. I have a strong desire to see it solved, because the people in the neighborhood, the businesses in the neighborhood have put up with enough, and it's, it's time to, to find a solution. And I appreciate Dwayne Hagerty's input late today. That's, that's very helpful towards a good resolution for everybody. But man, the clock is ticking, and it's ticking fast.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Wethel.
One question about the netting system that you had mentioned. Would that allow opening of a street?
So that's the goal, yes. So it would have to, for us to meet, they need to meet our order, which was dealing with those 10 structural issues so that we can open the street. So if it didn't, then that remedy is not going to be something that we say, you're done. So it does need to be able to open the street. So yes, that netting system would be part of, so the structural issue is more towards the other, like, the back and the bottom of those, and those are really just a risk of debris falling from them. They're not going to take the whole building with them if they come down. So that's just debris holding. And the structural design that they're doing is for that back, that front wall and what's going towards the courtyard, and that is the biggest piece. But yes, that if it didn't, for whatever reason, when it was reviewed by WHKS, they said, no, that's not going to work, they have to go back to the drawing board and, and give us another solution.
I'm interested in the timeline, and I know you do not have a crystal ball. But as we talk about, to me, first priority, number one, making sure everyone is safe. Number two, open the street. What is the best kind of long-range scenario of when that, say, it is secure, the netting system can work? How quickly could that happen?
So we have contracted with WHKS, and Mike Chinkis is the structural engineer, and he is ready to review it the moment it's done. So he's basically waiting for the completion. He'd review the completion, and if there's any tweaks or anything, it'd have to be, again, right away, first action. So we are anticipating that before the biggest snowfalls, I can't say snowfalls, because it could be snowing right now, but the big snowfall is, we want that street open by that time. So that's the goal. That's the goal of the timeline, and that's what we're pushing for. It's why we're holding them, like, if your engineer doesn't do it by Thanksgiving, we need to know now when it's coming, and if it's not, we're going to do it. We're going to do the engineering of that structure. Like, we're going to do some of these pieces if you don't and bill them to you. It is how we started this. We ordered a structural engineer to come in and do it. The owner did not hire that engineer, so we did, and we assessed it to Steve, because that, we weren't going to wait for that to happen.
And so theoretically, within the next month, we could open the street if it all jives, if it all works out, one step into the next.
Yep. That would be, the goal is January 1, we've got that street open. That's the goal, crystal ball, and what we're pushing for.
I appreciate that. I think, just to focus, the mention was that Dwayne Hagerty of Heritage Works has been a great advocate and helped me with some information, just in knowledge that he has shared with, with council. But the idea is that for the community at large, in order to get tax credits that give us the opportunity to potentially preserve this building, and when I say we, I mean as a community, but really, we don't own this, I just want to verify that for all of our city. We do not own this. This is not on our responsibility at this point. We are trying to hold people accountable in a meaningful way. And I, I applaud you, because I feel like, for the first time in a while, this feels like it has had momentum, but I'm very, I'm very sad for the community. I concur absolutely with Mr. Sprank that a staple is Copper Kettle, and this restaurant is fantastic. It is loved by so many people in the community, and it is suffering, and we have to, as a community, support that. But in, in a goal of trying to get state Historic Preservation Office attention and National Park Service attention that would equal dollars, that means the historic integrity of the building must stand, which really are the turrets or pillars, I'm sorry, I don't, I'm, I'm not.
The towers.
Yep, the towers. And so the initial discussion was, do we deconstruct the towers? And so I would just like to say, please, whatever we do, if we are not, if we are in any place to save a piece of this, let's not deconstruct the towers. Let's keep them until it is our last-ditch effort that we have explored everything else. Because if there's any opportunity in the future to salvage part of this building, that, it sounds like, must be in place, and we cannot deconstruct it. And so I would advocate very much for that. And again, thank you for everything you're doing. I know you're working hard. Thanks.
Streznik.
Thank you. So I did go down, and we ate at Copper Kettle, great place. You have to get, you have to go in, you have to go around a barricade, I hope I did that right. But you have to go around a barricade to get within a block of the place. And the signs weren't that great. I don't like not knowing that it's okay or not okay to go in. But we did, and it was delicious, like Wethel says. But I tell you what, I wish we had a bottom line. I know we're hoping for January 1, and we're hoping for this, and we've been hoping for 12 years or so for different things. These citizens need powerful partners, and it doesn't get any more powerful than city government and city staff. And we're saying, we, hmm. So we're doing the best we can. And they're thinking, well, boy, if you can't do it, we're in trouble. So I'm hoping that there is a drop deadline sometime that we, that we can either, that we say, look, it, it's not happening. We're going to have to use eminent domain, sue for closing, you know, sue for insurance or something to say, you know, these citizens, these businesses, you know, they deserve better than we're doing the best we can, which we are. So I'm just hoping to look for other solutions. And, you know, I'm on the landfill board, and we have to put away a lot of money for closing costs just in case. And I guess that our agreements don't say, look, you need to put up some earnest money just in case you don't come through, so we can tear this place down. We don't do anything like that, right?
We don't have a demolition reserve like that, no. I kind of may be able to dig something up as we look at, you know, some of the extra contract law. But right now, that's not something that we're aware would be existing in anyone's policy for insurance.
And you get, in your position, and Mr. Van Milligan's position as well, you get a lot of frustrated people, and you're very good with them. But you know what I'm talking about, right? It doesn't seem to be working like it should, and I, I get that, too. And I know you're doing everything, you're both doing everything you can to make this better. So we're all hoping for January 1, as you say. But hope is kind of weak, is the weakest thing. We need to leverage what we have, and I know you're trying to do that, as well as our fine civil attorney. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor? Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
The one thing I'd like to, and I appreciate everybody's frustration, we're frustrated too, but we have to work within the laws, statutes that exist in the judicial system. We don't have any absolute authorities, and that's a good thing. So we're working within those systems, and they're very challenging and difficult. And this happens to be one of those buildings that is iconic and huge and causing all kinds of problems. But there's other buildings in town that we have the same frustrations with, and then we end up with the building in the end. What do we do with them? We tear them down. What happens when we tear them down? We get criticized for tearing them down, when it wasn't us that created the condition that ended up meaning they had to be torn down. Somebody else owned them before us, and we couldn't get them to act. So we're equally as frustrated as everybody else, but we have a system that we're required by law to work within, and we're going to continue to work within that system.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
One positive thing that everybody listening can do, Copper Kettle and the other businesses down there are worth a couple blocks of walk. Don't forget about them. Don't write them off. Don't find it too inconvenient. They're struggling. They need your help. And we can solve that by, by going out to eat. It's a pretty nice solution. I hope people will do that.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, Ms. Russell.
Thank you. It, it sounds like some critical deadlines are coming up soon, like the December 3. And I was just wondering if we could plan to have an update at the next council meeting to say, you know, what happened at that deadline, where are we, and kind of reiterate some of our options, and, and perhaps make some better, more concrete suggestions at that time, once those, when those critical deadlines have passed? Is that, is that possible? Is that a plan we could have, or?
How about if we do December 18 instead of December 4? I just think that you need a little bit of time to pass here to.
You know what, you know what, though? I actually, I was, I was going to bring this up, too, and I appreciate what you're saying, Mike. We got to be able to have some time passing. But I'm, I'm going to ask for this to be on the next agenda, just as an update. Just tell us where we are. Action item number one, I'd like to know where we're at, and I'd like to be able to tell the community where we're at. So even if it's not that much farther, it's a little bit more, it's, it's two weeks down the road, we've got a little bit more information. I would like to see that. It's just an update, and it's okay if the answer is, this is where we are, because we've had a really thorough discussion here tonight about what this is and what we're able to do, how we've moved forward, what the plans really are. So it's, I think, it's, it's less about holding you all accountable, because I think you're doing what you need to do. I really, I'm very, I'm very confident that that's the case. As a city staff, you're doing what you need to do. It is definitely about holding Mr. Emerson accountable and, and saying, we're going to be talking about this every two weeks until we start to see some real movement. So I'd, I'd like to bring that back to the, to the next agenda, please, if we could.
Mr. Mayor, I forgot to ask, because Mike Belmont is here as the code official, and I have been managing, holding accountability, right, and calling Steve and doing those things, but so has Mike, and I just want to make sure that I covered everything. He had conversations with Zinzer and stuff today, so I just want to make sure we didn't miss anything. Okay. Just wanted to double check, since he had conversations and.
And I, and I didn't get a chance to add this, but I, we, I sincerely appreciate all the work that you're doing. This is, it, it's a lot. And Mike, your points that you made are really important ones. There, there are limits within the law that we have as a city, and you also rightly pointed out that those limits are there for good reasons. It's so we can't come swooping in to, to force property owners left and right to do things that would be incredibly unfair. But in this case, there are, there are legitimate reasons why the city is stepping in and why we're having this discussion so publicly right now. So I think it's really important that we continue to have that discussion openly and continue to push so that this does get done. It is, you know, while we do have a lot of buildings like this, and we have these situations all the time, this is a very big building. It is a very iconic building, and it is a major frustration for people in the community. And it's, it's time to make sure that we're all openly talking about it, so that we can make sure that we're moving things forward. Ms. Farber, I don't think I gave you a chance to say anything, if you had anything to add.
I think everyone has kind of covered the points that I would have covered with appreciation to the staff as well. And on behalf of the Historic Preservation Group, I do believe that if we could preserve the towers, not only is that important because of the, the history behind it, but also because going forward, we could get some funding to kind of reconstruct and use it in some fashion or form for that part of the city. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farber. Anything else to add, Alexis, for us? Okay. Thank you very much for spending time with us here.
Thank you.
All right. Motion here was to receive and file, have that discussion. So Adrian, you can call the roll, please.
Russell.
Aye.
Streznik.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number two is purchase of property at 2820 Brunswick.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Sprank and a second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Housing and Community Development Director Alexis Steger is recommending city council approval to purchase property for sale at 2820 Brunswick for redevelopment into new affordable housing units. 2820 Brunswick is being sold by the estate of Esther Tome, and the estate is unwilling to separate the lots from the single family home, so a singular purchaser must acquire all eight parcels. Each vacant undeveloped lot is .12 acres, 50 feet by 100 feet, and is Zoned R1. With all set back requirements, the maximum square footage of a single-family home would be 2,812 square feet. One lot is bordered on two streets, and one would have a maximum single-family home size of 1,776 feet. I concur with the recommendation in respect to request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have any discussion? Mr. Streznik.
Mayor, yes, thank you. So this looks like a great opportunity for many of our, our goals and priorities. And do we have any kind of working plans or some brainstorming on, on this that we can talk about, or is it just too early?
Alexis Steger, Housing Community Development Director. So what we are envisioning for this is a single-family home with an accessory dwelling unit garage towards the back of, of the property. It has a way to make a, what used to be an alley was vacated. We now can get that parcel back and make it an alley again for those garage and accessory dwelling units. So it's a really good way to get two smaller homes that are affordable on the lot. One would be rental, the other would have to be owner-occupied. And so we'd make sure that that, so that's the vision, is an owner-occupied with an accessory dwelling unit option that they could rent. Obviously, you don't have to if you have the accessory dwelling unit on your property. That would be for all four lots, so four on each. We are looking for a partner to do that work. We have talked to Ani, and they just want to make sure they're focusing on a couple of the things, and they may be ready in time. If not, there, we actually had another partner reach out recently that has not done work in Dubuque yet, is a nonprofit. So we are looking for that partnership that would be part of this, so.
Great. Some, some possibilities, development possibilities, again, like we had earlier this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Sprank.
Actually, I have a question. So this isn't going to happen right away. It's probably going to take a couple of years before really anything really moves forward with the land.
Yeah. I mean, we could, we, we are looking to start work on the property that exists within this next summer. So that would be, we either turn around as is, or we're going to rehab that for affordable, an affordable purchase. And it is a smaller home that would, would be okay for that. But we'd need to separate the parcels, so that takes a little bit of time. Parcel it out, make sure we're vacating the right spaces. But we could do that one within this, this next summer timeframe, and then the four lots would be slotted for that next construction season.
Just so when folks are all of a sudden, oh, there's houses being built, and nobody approached them or something, and I just want to get, let them know, it's not going to be tomorrow. It's going to be a little ways out. Thank you.
Ms. Russell.
Thank you. I think in the memo, it stated that, you know, what's laid out here is really consistent with the neighborhood that's around there. So it's not going to change the look of the neighborhood. And I think what's exciting is that it offers a kind of affordable housing that's not often found. You know, usually it's. You know, usually it's an apartment, and this would be more of a single-family home, which is an option that's not always available. So I think it's really exciting. Thank you.
Ms. Russell actually touched on something that I was going to ask, because this is a, this is a fairly unique situation for us. You know, we, you, your department is buying homes here and there, and we do that, but it's been kind of in a, in the same area, North End, Washington neighborhood, places like that. Places are normally a little bit smaller, and then they're rehab. We use the HART program, for example, as partners, and we rehab those, those places and turn around and sell those to, to new homeowners. But this is different because it's a larger parcel, it's in a different neighborhood than we've usually worked in. What was it that, and since it is unique, I, I just feel they need to ask that question. I mean, what was it that tipped you off that this would be something that you'd want to recommend to us?
Well, we just do not have a lot of infill lots, which is why this is unique for us. And when we do have infill lots, they're usually bigger developments, so multifamily is considered and other things like that. When you talk about smaller lots like this to build a smaller house, you can't even get developers to think about what they could do with it, because it really doesn't turn a profit, which is where we can step in with our niche of, we don't need to turn a profit, we want to get people into low-modest income homes, and that's kind of where we sit as a government. And I think that's why it sat on the market for quite some time and wasn't pursued by developers, because it really just isn't fit that. It's an R1, they can't put anything but one single-family dwelling unit unless they want to rezone, and in a neighborhood that's established, that's harder to do. Fits our, fits our mold really well, and we've got the housing TIF that is for this purpose, and it's so hard to get developers to want to build these homes. So it gives us the opportunity to do it, and super unique. And we were turned onto it by a resident, so, you know, something that residents have noticed as well is like, hey, this might be good for what the city's trying to do.
I, I appreciate you speaking to that, because when I, when I look at this, and when I was reading through all of this, it struck me that this is what innovative thinking in government looks like. I mean, that's, this is what it looks like. And, and I think we get accused oftentimes in, in city governments, municipal governments, of not thinking innovatively and trying to do things in the same mold that we've always done. And I appreciate the fact that, that you and your department and others have looked at this in a different way. So I'm looking forward to voting for it. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
All right. Well, with that, we have a motion here to, sorry, receive and file and adopt the resolution. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number three is tax increment ordinance for the Emory Urban Renewal District.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file, and I further move that a requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings, meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Russell and a second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council adopt a tax, tax increment ordinance for the Emory Urban Renewal District. Adoption of the proposed tax increment ordinance is needed to establish the use of tax increment financing to the district. The district would include property adjacent to Radford Road, south of Pizza Ranch, located at 2820 Radford Road. I concur with the recommendation in respect to request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion here? So, Mike, we voted on something earlier this, this evening about this already for the public hearing. Can you, can you help us understand the difference? I just want to make sure that people recognize that and what we're, what we're doing next here. Sure.
Good evening. Jill Connors, Economic Development Director. Earlier, you passed a resolution which created the urban renewal area, and this creates the TIF district in that area. So when we create the urban renewal area, that's where we can spend increment that's generated by increased property values. We have to create the TIF ordinance to collect that increment. So it's the two different sides of the coin of, of the same project.
Got you. So we're passing the ordinance now that allows us to do that collection?
Right.
Got it. Okay. Understood. All right. Well, we're having a long evening, we're a couple down right here, but still good on numbers. So Adrian, if you could, we have a motion here to receive and file, waive the three readings. Adrian, could you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
And Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Russell.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Russell, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number four is automated speed enforcement.
Mr. Jones.
The documents, I further move that, that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended.
Second by Sprank.
A motion by Jones and a second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Chief of Police Jeremy Jensen is recommending city council implement automated speed enforcement in the city of Dubuque. This was first on a city council agenda on February 6, 2023, and then again on February 20, 2023. The city council then held a work session to discuss this topic on June 20, 2023. Traffic enforcement, particularly speed enforcement, is a frequent request of the Dubuque Police Department. The purpose of traffic enforcement, particularly speed enforcement, is to reduce the amount of motor vehicle crashes and reduce the severity of those crashes by ultimately changing drivers' patterns of behavior. Motor vehicle crashes cause not only impacts to individuals in the form of injuries and monetary loss, they disrupt traffic flow, potentially cause additional crashes, crashes, and take a great deal of staff allocation and time to complete. In 2022, the Dubuque Police Department investigated 1,510 motor vehicle crashes. Six of those crashes were fatal crashes, a 10-year high, and so far, there have been two fatal crashes in Dubuque in 2023. Excessive speed was a contributing factor in almost all of these crashes in 2022. Data provided by the Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau shows that in Iowa, speed was a factor in many of the fatal crashes. Iowa State Patrol statistics for the last three years has shown an exponential increase in speed citations over 100 miles per hour. The police department receives on average of two to three requests per week for speed enforcement. Currently, the department has 13 sworn officer vacancies. The department responded to over 50,000 calls for service in 2022. Traffic enforcement is a proactive, proactive activity done when time allows, as responding to calls takes priority. Traffic enforcement often becomes a secondary priority due to the volume of calls for service and staffing issues, but even when the police department is fully staffed. Police officer safety is an important issue. Traffic stops are one of the most dangerous activities officers partake in. Not only does the officer have to contend with an unknown driver, the officer also has to contend with other vehicle traffic. Additionally, traffic stops involve flashing lights, flashing lights, causing erratic behavior from drivers resulting in additional crashes, crashes as people slow, look, or erratically change lanes. Certain areas, such as Lower Dodge Street, generate speed complaints and are prone to crashes, crashes which are often difficult and dangerous for officers to work in a traffic enforcement capacity without further impacting traffic patterns. Racial profiling, pretextual stops, and bias are allegations made around traffic enforcement, as there is a human factor when an officer decides to stop a vehicle. Additionally, when an officer makes a stop on a motorist, the claim is that the officer has now missed 10 other violations. Automated speed enforcement is common in many cities throughout Iowa, such as Cedar Rapids, Des Moines, and the Des Moines metropolitan area, Waterloo, and Davenport, as well as a number of small towns. Cedar Rapids has had this technology for many years. Chief Jensen discussed the use and potential problems of the systems with Cedar Rapids Police Chief Wayne German. Chief German advises that the system has had a positive effect on reducing motor vehicle crashes. On a particular stretch of Interstate 380, fatal accidents went from five per year to one in 10 years, and this one was not speed-related. Cons of the system include not being popular with some people, it is not perfect. However, there is oversight. A police officer is required to review the violation identified by the automated speed enforcement system. There is also an appeal process. Citations are issued to registered owners, which some people argue this is not fair to the owner, as it may not be the owner driving the vehicle. Conversely, others would argue, the owner is responsible for the use of their vehicle and who they allow to drive the vehicle. The benefits of automated speed enforcement include the following. First, it is 24/7/365 coverage of an area. Staffing does not allow for officers to sit in an area for this amount of time. Automated speed enforcement is a force multiplier that offsets police department staffing issues and leverages technology. Second, there is a safety factor for both officers and motorists by not conducting physical traffic stops on often busy and high-speed roadways. Third, the cameras keep working during the time an officer would be out of service during that stop. Fourth, the citation is a civil citation that does not count against driving records or insurance. The ultimate goal is to not have drivers suspended for non-payment of fines, but to have accountability that ultimately changes driving behavior. And finally, there is minimal or no cost to the city. The vendor of these systems do not charge for the installation or maintenance, as they are paid by a percentage from each ticket issued, roughly 35%, depending on the vendor. The benefit is this is a standalone system, not related to our traffic camera system, that is maintained by the vendor. My intent would be to recommend through the city budget process, any revenue go towards traffic safety expenses. Traffic safety includes the safety of the motoring public, bicyclists, and pedestrians. The city council budgeted in fiscal year 2023 to create two new positions to deal with diversion through the city Dubuque Notice of Violation System and the court system, so people can reduce their fines or avoid jail time by doing community service. One of the new positions is to connect people who need diversion services, and the other is to develop a community service system, so there is a system in place for that diversion to exist, and so that successfully performing that community service can be tracked. In the case of normal speeding tickets issued by a police officer, so not in automated speed enforcement, a person speeding at 11 to 15 miles over the speed limit would be subject to a $175.15 fine, and higher speeds increase the fine. There have been significant changes to this recommendation since it came to the city council earlier, earlier this year, as we listened to community input. The largest change is the emphasis on enforcement of vehicles traveling at higher speeds. If a vehicle, under this new ordinance recommendation, if a vehicle is on a divided highway with a posted speed limit of 45 miles per hour or higher, the penalties for speeding would not start until the vehicle was traveling at least 16 miles per hour over the speed limit, instead of the previously recommended 11 miles per hour over the speed limit, unless it is a school zone or a construction zone. In other areas where the speed limit is less than 45 miles per hour, there would be violations in the 11 to 15 mile per hour range. Violations in the 11 to 15 mile per hour where applicable, and 16 to 20 mile per hour would receive a courtesy violation ticket with no fine on their first offense. The second violation in the range of 11 to 15 miles per hour and 16 to 20 miles per hour would be a fine with a 50% discount. The third violation in the range of 11 to 15 miles per hour and 16 to 20 miles per hour would be eligible to do community service to reduce the fine by 50%. For the fourth and subsequent violations in the range of 11 to 15 miles per hour and 16 to 20 miles per hour, only low and moderate income individuals would be eligible for a 50% fine reduction with community service. For the fourth and subsequent violations at 21 miles per hour, and over low and moderate income individuals would be eligible for a 50% discount with extra community service over standard requirements at lower speeds. Charts are included in the ordinance for clarity in visualizing the speed zone and fine structure. The purpose of the request for automated speed enforcement was based on several factors. Number one, a safe and livable community is a city council priority. If the chief of police and I can identify methods to promote proactive safety measures, then it is our job to propose those ideas. Number two, with staff shortages and hiring impediments, finding force multiplier methods that leverage technology can be used to address crash prevention, reduction in crash severity, and addressing frequent complaints about speed enforcement. Promoting officer safety and to reduce bias or perceived bias in traffic stops. I concur with the recommendation in respect to request mayor and city council approval to implement automated speed enforcement. And now we have presentations by Chief of Police Jeremy Jensen and the Engineering Department.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Thanks for having me back on this. So I, I want to thank you, though, I do want to thank you for slowing this down, because we learned a lot. I mean, this is one thing, is we started to look more into this and started to really research and look into what's best practices and all the different things that go into this. There, there is a lot, and there's some concerns. I will say this, this isn't going away. Not necessarily here in Dubuque in the United States. Automation of enforcement is, is here. I recently attended the Iowa, or International Association of Chiefs of Police Conference, and the whole premise was leveraging technology and what's out there. It is just, as the city manager said, this is a force multiplier for us to be able to do that. I want, I guess, to make it clear, when, when this is brought before you, you know, this is not, you know, my decision to bring this forward may be questioned, but I really want you to understand my intent. And my intent is not about the money grab, as we've heard. My intent is about traffic safety. That is my number-one priority. As a proponent of this for the last 30 years, this is another way that I can, you know, it's not the end-all, beat-all. I'm going to say that upfront, and we'll talk more about that, but I want to, want you to understand that, that my intent is traffic safety. So why? Why did we, why did I bring this forward? Talk about reduced staffing. Again, a national problem. You know, every time we replace somebody, or we lose somebody, we go to replace them. It takes, you know, 12 months to 18 months to, by the time we first test with them to bring them on, it's a slow process. You know, we're currently down 13 officers. I have four known retirements in the next six months. These are things that I have to look at as the community is asking for enforcement efforts, what, what can we do? Our call for service volume, this year, we're, we're on trend to be about, on our average, is about 55,000 calls for service, again, with roughly 100 active officers, some of those in training and in and out of training. We cannot be in a single spot in 24/7. We just cannot. That's not feasible. That's not feasible for an officer to sit in one location. The community demand for traffic enforcement. We heard that, you know, the community is, is against some of the enforcement efforts, but they're, quite honestly, I get quite frequent requests for this. People talk to me all the time about traffic enforcement and being in their neighborhood. The reduction in severity of accidents, I want to bring this up, because even when we talked about data before, and we'll talk more about data today, really looking at the reactive side of data, this is what happened. This is what we're seeing. Crashes here, crashes there, that kind of thing. The reduction in severity of accidents, I want to bring this up, because even when we talked about data before, and we'll talk more about data today, really looking at the reactive side of data, this is what happened, this is what we're seeing, crashes here, crashes there, that kind of thing. It really comes down to being proactive with traffic enforcement. And then we'll talk more about that in a minute. Amount of time we spend on accidents. So just to give you some numbers, in 2023 so far, we're averaging about 118 crashes per month. Of that, so far in 2023, we've had, when I ran the numbers, it was 11 severe accidents and one fatal. Now, there's two fatals and 14 severe accidents, so these are starting, they go up, they do not, it's not a static number, and that number always goes up almost daily, when it comes to crashes and different things like that. And you're literally one bad accident away from things happening. You know, and when I talk about the bad accident, what originally brought this idea up and why I brought this forward is because of the crash on Northwest Arterio. And I don't know if you heard this, but the speed on that was 150 miles an hour at the time of that, when that vehicle left the roadway. Am I going to say that this would prevent that? Maybe. You know, if we have a location, we have speed enforcement consistently set up at a location, does it get, I just get tired of getting tickets every time I go through there because I have a propensity to speed. So maybe it does, maybe it doesn't, but I think that's, we got to try. Locations not conducive to conventional enforcement. We talked about Lower Dodge Street. There is no place to make a stop on Lower Dodge Street without causing an impact, either to the safety of the officer or the safety of motorists. You're coming downhill, you throw weather into this, or roadway conditions, heavy congestion, and we create actually some of the bigger problems by doing traffic stops during the time of day when there's a lot of traffic going through there. And the last thing is to reduce bias and perceived bias in stops. The cameras don't have a bias on who they're stopping. They're stopping, actually what the camera is not stopping anybody, it's reading a plate, and that's what's doing, and reading a speed, and going with that. So as we went through this, we've had numerous hours here talking about this, and quite honestly, it raised a lot of questions. And this is what I was talking about early on, about thanking you for slowing this down. Do they really work? How is the technology, how the technology works in and of itself? So we had a presentation on that by a vendor. You know, the cameras are outstanding, as you can see, as they told us, they're on the Mars rover, so there's some good cameras. But there's a need for more data, better explanation of the crash data, and we're going to do some of that tonight. The speed studies, which we did, which the speed studies showed, we got a speeding problem. Crash data related to the speed studies. And engineering, Justine Hall will present on that in a little bit. And then additional assurances about the technology, safety, and data. So the research, and you had a lot of supporting documents that were given to you tonight. Now, you'll hear that there's potentially, if you look at, well, look at the list of what is the supporting data, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, the National Traffic Safety Board, the International Insurance Highway Safety, I'm trying to go on that, our International Association of Chiefs of Police, University of Chicago did a study for the city of Chicago, the city of Portland, Congressional Research Service, and then Abhishek Rai, which was our IMCA intern, he actually did a bunch of studying pulling all this together. But what are these telling us? So these are, I would call these trusted sources, when it comes to the data. These are the traffic safety people, University of Chicago, academia, the city of Portland. But I want to kind of point out some things with this, like the NHTSA study, over from 2011 to 2020, it gave five-star rating to automated speed enforcement as being effective. The National Traffic Safety Board. And here, we'll read on some of these. Off a page. There we go. So the National Traffic Safety Board, ASE has some advantage over in-person speed by an officer. It provides a force multiplier effect that can free up limited law enforcement resources to be used for other purposes. ASE can operate in a location under conditions that would make traffic stops dangerous or impractical, and it may reduce congestion from other drivers distracted by traffic stop. Finally, its high rate of speeding detection may provide a higher general deterrence effect. The IIH study, speed safety cameras when used properly, we will discuss about properly, because that is very important, can be an important tool for discouraging drivers from exceeding posted speed limits. The University of Chicago study showed a 15% reduction in fatalities and severe injury. But they made a point, and that's, I think, that's part of really what we need to talk about, too, when we're talking about policy and ordinance, they made a point that these could impact, disproportionate impact on people of color and then people in poverty. This is part of where policy and ordinance comes into effect. The city of Portland created a Vision Zero initiative, which included 20 cameras, data over four years showed a 94% decrease in top-end speeding, 11 miles per hour or more over the posted speed limit. Congressional research paper states the vehicle crashes are one of the leading causes of death. The paper states, there have been many studies of speed camera programs, most have included that speed cameras reducing speed in or crashes in the vicinity of the camera, in some cases in surrounding areas. Several reviews looked at dozens of studies from around the world and found that despite methodological issues, in most studies, speed cameras reduce speeding and/or crashes. The IIH study states, well, we talked about that one already. So what's the opposition to this? And I think what we're seeing is that there's, it does work, but there is, again, the opposition. So I had an email over the weekend stating that for every study there is supporting it, there's a study against it. So I Googled that this morning, did not find it. Eight of these ones showed up as the first ones when I Googled "studies against speed cameras." So they're showing that it works. However, there is a study, or there's a position, and it's from the ACLU. ACLU states, you know, we need to be very, very cognizant of issues that are here. ACLU, I'm probably getting ahead of myself here, so let me slow down. Conflicting data. We talked about that, and we'll talk some more about crash data. No protection against dangerous drivers. They're absolutely right, there's not, but I will point out, dangerous drivers, there'll be dangerous drivers no matter a police officer is sitting there or not. It does happen. They drive dangerously. Revenue generators with no oversight, again, policy and ordinance. No due process for the driver, again, policy and ordinance. Insufficient notices, device locations, and use. And that is a concern. To me, there is no reason to hide it. There's no reason to hide any of this, let everybody know, because what we're really looking for is voluntary compliance. We're looking for drivers to change their behavior and actually say, yep, I'm not going to do that. Private vendors and misuse of data, that is a concern. What happens to that data? We saw this with, when we talked about automated license plate readers, what happens to that data? I will point out, you know, when we're talking about misuse of data, the difference is that if we have oversight on that, we can actually regulate that, right? We can actually hold the vendor accountable, as opposed to, and I think this was brought up before, what oversight do we have on this kind of data that's being passed around? Don't know. The Big Brother approach to monitoring driver behavior, you know, and is that because of the cameras, is that because of government? I guess that's the question I would ask on that, is that, which area are we looking at? Community concerns. So these are ones that I got in response to the several times that I've been here. Hire more police officers into the ASE. I just explained to you why that is very difficult to do. Reduces tourism and commerce. I'll just point towards Cedar Rapids and Des Moines on this. Again, I don't have the data on it, but I don't see those reducing their commerce or tourism in those two cities. Unfairly tracks enforced protected class drivers. This does not track drivers. It's a vehicle. So I want to point that out, because one of the concerns was that we're tracking young drivers with this. It's not. It's not about the driver, it's about the vehicle. The owner held accountable instead of the driver. That was a concern, right? This is, when we're talking about that, the Iowa code already has an allowance for identifying the driver of a vehicle in crashes. The owner, by the code of Iowa, has to identify the driver in a vehicle. And, you know, you heard, what about company cars, rental cars? I just rented a car recently, and in the contract, it says if you go through one of these, because I was out in Washington, DC, you're going to pay for it, it's going to just get credited to your credit card, so it's there. It's about holding drivers, and I would argue that you shouldn't hold people who drive your vehicle accountable, because they get in a crash, who's still accountable for it? It's not us as government, it's the owner of the vehicle. Technology is unreliable and lies, and we've had the technology side, this is vetted. Again, there has to be oversight, and there has to be the ability for us to see the transparency of what goes on there, because that's important. I want to take my chances with an officer. This is an emotional thing. One, from what I heard from people, I'm less likely to get stopped, so I'll take my chances with that. The second part of that is, there's an emotional tide, and none of us want to get caught. I mean, that's plain and simple. None of us want to have, get caught for doing something, that's just part of this. ASEs are not proven, they're all over the country, and I think it's hard to say they are not proven at this point in time. Now, local data, I talked about the nuances of crash data one of the times I was here, and why it was difficult. I included the Iowa DOT crash reporting sheets, these are the sheets the officers use when doing crash reporting. As you can look there, look at the list they get a pick from, and I included the whole thing, this is just two of the four pages that they have to use. This is why you see data that may be conflicting, you don't see that speed is part of this. Now, you look at some of the variables that I threw up here, distracted driving, fair to obey traffic control device, this is signage and lights, and we talked about the signage down by H and W and driving around, that's signage, that's a control device, fair to maintain control, speeding, erratic driving, this is improper lane changes, fail to signal, et cetera, and then throw in roadway conditions and weather conditions on this. Which of these I would propose is, can, do we have an effect on? Now, let me talk about distracted driving for a second. We automatically go to phones in distraction with that. I will point at distracted driving, that part's enforceable. What's not enforceable with distracted driving is the ability for us to enforce a kid yelling in the backseat, and you're paying attention to that, you having a bad day and your focus is not on your driving, dropping a napkin on the floor, playing with the radio, these are things that are not enforceable, but they are distracted driving, anything that's going on. So I want to point that out, it's hard to enforce. The fair to obey traffic control device, we are not talking about red light cameras here, so I'm not going to go into that. Fair to maintain control, this is the one that, again, is the data, and it was, I think some people thought was the aha moment, see, fair to maintain control does not show speed. You're right, it doesn't. It does not show speed. The thing is, with a crash, when we're doing crash investigation, to identify speed is difficult. In a mission, or we have it, you know, have it on radar, our cameras are not quarter-moment, we don't do time-distance on our cameras to figure out if somebody's speeding, we can do, as I said in the memo, in my memo, we can pull the black box on vehicles, that'll show it, but that, the problem with that is, that is a search warrant, that is a seizure of the vehicle, that takes time. 118 accidents, we're not doing that on every accident. We're doing it on fatal crashes, and we're doing it on some of the severe crashes to determine that. The erratic driving, again, is there another way, other than an officer viewing improper lane changes, fail to signal, et cetera, being able to do that, leveraging technology to do some of these enforcement things? There really is not. Again, we could look at our cameras, we've done that in accidents to prove reckless driving and things like that, but we don't, on every single accident, go back and say, well, I take that back. We do kind of go back and look at some of these accidents, we do look at what the causation is, but again, the speeding part of that is not something that we can pick up with our current camera system. This is the crash map. I just want to show this, again, you've seen this before, you saw it for 2022, this is 2023, this is just the locations of where most of our crashes are occurring. I'm throwing this out there, and this is the reactive side of that. Very, you look at it, Dodge and Locust, pretty much the downtown area, Dodge Street, you can see the major intersections there as you come across, and Dodge and JFK being the big red circle, and then going north on JFK, which is JFK and Penn, and JFK and Asbury. Those are our big areas. Everywhere that's highlighted on there is a propensity for accident. Now, talking about proactive side, the one thing the data does not show is how many accidents or crashes were prevented. Okay? I talked about things that we have the ability to potentially prevent. Reaction time and stopping distance are huge when it comes to crashes. So factors affecting reaction time, distraction, visibility, physical ability, cognitive ability, and speed. As you can see on the right, Travis Kramer, one of our accident reconstructionists, threw this together. If you can see the reaction time, amount of seconds, 5.5 seconds, 25 miles an hour, minimum braking, 17.36, minimum stopping, 22.86, maximum reaction distance, 76.97. You see this as it starts to go up. Speed makes a difference in this. Again, I cannot enforce cognitive ability, physical ability, a little bit harder to do on this, but this is, again, looking at the prevention side, is there something we can do to try to prevent crashes? And more even more, because again, it's not just preventing the crashes, I think that's the secondary side, again, this is where I was short-sighted before when I was here, it's really preventing or trying to reduce crash severity, because that's where, that's really, literally where it hurts, is the crash severity on this. The other factors that affect stopping distance, roadway surface, roadway conditions, size of vehicle, general maintenance of vehicle, and speed. What is the common denominator in the two? You saw this slide before the first time. Speed does kill. That is a quote from one of the, that used to be out, was one of the PSAs that was out there. I just throw this out, because you can look at the difference, how the kinetic energy in a crash goes up exponentially with the speed, just with 20 miles an hour speed. That's not exponentially on the speed going up, but the kinetic energy does. And that's the part that I want to point out, because this is, this is the stuff that, again, creates the most damage, creates the most injury. Now I'm going to have Justine Hall come up and explain, from the engineering side of it, the traffic studies and data collection.
Hi, good evening. Justine Hall, traffic engineer. So I will basically be going through just some speed data, some crash data, and how that kind of correlates with some video examples, so I'm hoping that works, but if not, it's going to be unfortunate. But, so first, I kind of want to go back to, we had a session in June that we gave a lot of speed data for multiple locations throughout the city. So I kind of want to just review that really quick, and then we'll kind of go big picture and then scoot on down to those examples. So here on the screen, we have just our latest and greatest traffic counters that I and other colleagues implement, and we get a lot of data points from those, and they give us good reports on speed in that location, classification of vehicles, and volume. So this is the big overview of the multiple locations that we had for this project and other studies that we've had. So kind of ignoring the 11 to 15 miles per hour over since that threshold has changed, anything over 16 miles an hour and plus with that general traffic volume of 133,000 with those multiple locations, I just did the quick math, 16 plus, that changes that percentage down to about 5%, which is still substantial, but that would be anybody in those areas. And obviously, these areas have different posted speed limits, so the Northwest Arterio is probably our highest, which is 50 miles an hour, getting into the east side, which could vary between 25 to 45. So within these areas, I am going to show you three. Two of them are along the Northwest Arterio, and one is along Ronberg Avenue. So this is, these video examples and this breakdown of this speed and crash data will be based on these study areas, and I'll kind of, I might get ahead of myself here, but so this slide here is, and I kind of want you to think a little bit, I wish we had the heat map on here, but I'll go back. But this heat map, if you kind of can visualize that, I apologize, but we can tell that we have a lot of crashes downtown, and we obviously have some crashes on Northwest Arterio, and JFK was a big, big component to that, too. A lot of these are going to have intersection crashes, which is, which is kind of where people tend to make those mistakes, whether they're running red lights, all those other things. So a question that came up for the study, for the speed data, was that if there were any crashes at the locations of the traffic counters. Now, we did look kind of in a buffer zone, so we looked 1,000 feet, you know, whether it's north and south, or east or west, of those placements of the counters. Fortunately, or unfortunately, however you want to look at that, we didn't have any crashes on those study days. But we did look at, using GIS data, we pulled crash information into our crash information into our buffer zones. And we had seven hundred and twenty-five crashes within those total nineteen locations. So if we were to kind of put those speed factors on there, we kind of get down to less than fifty. And we have factors that include aggressive driving, driving too fast for conditions. Some, there's minor that have exceeded authorized speed, or following too close. Too close was the majority of that forty-seven. But that, you know, the chief was saying that it is kind of hard to determine your speed limit and if you're speeding at that point of, of the collision. So this is, this is gonna, this is a lot to look at, so I'm going to break it down for us. But I want to look the, the big overview of northwest arterial. This was kind of the first corridor that we were thinking of putting these speed enforcement cameras on. This is, you know, a high-speed area. Now, again, going back to what I was saying with the heat map, a lot of crashes happen at intersections. And obviously, we're placing counters along the thoroughfare between those intersections. But let's start up at the corner, up at the left corner. So that section is between Pennsylvania Avenue and Holiday. So that's along northwest arterial. And it has that speed information and who's going over in the red there. And that's across the whole top. So if you were to continue along the top, you're going from Pennsylvania to Holiday. And then the next picture over in the middle there would be between Plaza Drive and JFK. So you're going north on the arterial. And then the last picture on the right on the top would be between JFK and Central, near the new Switch Homes development. So that is, you know, that ranges from seventeen to fifty percent of people going over, over the speed limit in this, in this area. So underneath that is the crash analysis that we have from GIS that we've pulled in. You know, we're looking at that thousand feet. And you can see the, the red arrows or the red spot there. That would be where the, the counters were placed. And the blue dots correlate with the traffic crashes that, that were in that buffer zone. So if we look at that first section, we have about eight crashes. Now, this is a span of as much data as we could possibly collect. So we actually have data that goes back to two thousand and nine. So that's a fourteen-year span. That's pretty big. And we don't normally look at that. We normally look at three to five years. So we have eight crashes there for that whole fourteen-year period. But I, I did some digging and the last five years in the Pennsylvania Holiday section, I only have one crash and that person ran off the road. The next section there in the middle, we see a little bit more blue dots, kind of more spread out between Plaza Drive and JFK. And, and that is a total, over that fourteen-year span, the total data that we have is about nine crashes. Within the last five years, so since two thousand and eighteen, we have one. And that was animal-related. So that's, that's pretty common out on this, on this corridor. And lastly, JFK to Central, obviously, you can see there's a ton of blue dots there. So we have twenty-nine crashes over the span of that fourteen timeline. In the last five years, we've had nine crashes, and eight of them being animals and one distracted driving. And that could be a slew of things. But I just wanted to squeeze that crash data in because this leads into my first example at northwest arterial in Pennsylvania. I know that is a little bit south of our, of our study area, but it is relatively close and fairly recent as well. So, excuse me. On the left here, I do have a snapshot of the police report and how that narrative and how that diagram looks, just kind of for, for reference. But my main priority is I want to share the, the crash severity at this intersection. So that is looking at, you know, the turn lanes on, you know, every, every leg of this corridor. So that severity you'll see for the past five years, again, I'm not, I wasn't looking at the whole fourteen, but the last five years, we've had, excuse me, sixty-eight crashes, majority of them being property damage, and then one suspected serious injury. So you can kind of see that in the graph below it. That injury is orange. If it was fatal, it gets, it gets redder on there. So and then below that is how the crash kind of happened. And remember, this is in the intersection. So, you know, the rear end, you can see the thirty-two out of the sixty-eight, so that's almost half. The rear end, that could possibly be within the lanes. And it could come from anywhere. It could be in any part of the intersection. But you can see there's kind of a multitude of, of angles, you know, broadside, side swipes, things like that. And the report that I'm showing is, you know, how do you kind of technically call it as a broadside? You know, they kind of touched, they kissed a little bit. You know, how do you classify that? So that's another, you know, it could be other at that point. So hopefully, this will... No video. Anybody with the video? No video? Okay. Awkward. I had a document full of links. My video was very large. I can share this information with you and kind of have a voiceover for that, if that's what we're looking for. But so going back to this crash, I will just look at this crash report. What happened was there was a vehicle that was going westbound on Pennsylvania Avenue. The person, the number one car is going, is headed eastbound, but is in the left turn lane and is turning left. And so what happened was, is that this person was coming basically through this yellow light and hit this person and ran the yellow light and the red light. So that, they skidded against that person and they skid right through the, the signal head and the, the ped button. And they don't knock any masked arms down or anything like that. But obviously, there's some property damage there. So unfortunately, I apologize, that's not viewable, but I can definitely send that. They are short snippets of, of the video. But that does just show how that person goes through that. And I think we can move on here. So here are some screenshots of the video. So this, if you look at the one on the left, there is a red car in that, in that through lane that's coming towards us. So that's kind of the moment where I see the, the lights turn yellow and they're coordinated. So if you're looking at it this way, it's, it's the same way as the eastbound and westbound would be synced up at that point. So he hits the yellow at that point, at two fifty-nine thirty-one. So thirty-one is the seconds on that. And if we go five seconds forward, we will see that there's the red car colliding with the other red car that is trying to turn left. Because if you've ever been in that left turn lane and want to take a turn at the very end and you're, in your yellow and you're stuck in the middle, middle of the intersection, you're trying to gun it out of there. So that, I think, is what that person was trying to achieve. But as you can tell, there is, is only five seconds of difference between that. So what happens with that, then, is to determine kind of their speed at that point would be, you know, a good old Google measurement. So that's roughly four hundred and four feet with that five seconds. So feet per second, two miles per hour. The road is relatively flat. And we can kind of see that, that person possibly topped out at fifty-five miles an hour going through that yellow light. So that is, that is a calculation. It's not, it, again, it could be, it could be less. It could be a little bit more. That is just as accurate as I can get it. But with my analysis, since the road is relatively flat, you know, I, I look at the make of the car, you know, he's a little Mazda, he goes a little fast, you know, that seems reasonable that he could have topped out at fifty-five miles an hour. So moving on to the Romberg Avenue. So this was another study area that we had. A great area, actually. Probably one of the lower areas of, of speeding. But I still wanted to show this example just because of other factors as well. So Romberg Avenue between Humboldt and Schiller, we can see, you know, they have less than five percent over that threshold. And obviously, that would, that would be even less if we're just doing sixteen plus. So just a review of that speed data. And again, this crash data on Romberg, when I say a thousand feet, you know, we're looking at the corridor as well, but we're also doing a radius. So this is kind of a thousand-foot radius of, of Romberg. But when I did my analysis for the crash along Romberg, to get this thirty, thirty-six for the crash total, that is that whole corridor stretch that we see from the top of the blue dot to the bottom, which is around Windsor, up to, which I believe is Stafford. Not familiar with that area, really. But I did that whole section for the past five years. Again, we have a majority of property damage. And we can see a little bit more is broadside or rear end on, on that front going on, on Romberg. So in the graph, you can see that there's not any oranges or reds, which is, which is great. And the, just for your knowledge, the speed limit on Romberg is thirty miles an hour. There would be a video here. But we will, we will look at this snapshot of how we do the timestamp. So this was in November of last year. And this was, this was a great example because this was the video that was right kind of where the, the traffic study took place. But I want to know, note that it is happening at one twenty in the morning and, you know, goes into the next minute there. So if we do fifty-three to sixty-one, that is, that is eight seconds. So we will do the same sort of breakdown with that. You know, we can see that car right, right above, north of Dock Street, right by Marshall School. And kind of where they hit that person on, what happened was, is they kind of coasted to the side and broadsided a parked vehicle. So we can see that they traveled three hundred and seventy-five feet in that eight seconds, roughly thirty-two miles an hour, kind of over the speed limit. You know, that's, it was pretty average with that. So, you know, there's, we have to kind of look at other, other conditions. It was rainy. So if we go back to this picture, it looks rainy. It's one twenty in the morning. The driver could be impaired, whether it's drinking, drugs, or they were tired. And they, you know, technically, they weren't necessarily speeding a lot. And, and also going back to that three seventy-five, I think that thirty-two is pretty accurate. It is pretty flat on Romberg there. So I wouldn't assume any, any difference with the, with the vehicle or anything like that. So, gosh, I'm really bummed out that you guys can't see the videos. I really do apologize. Moving on to the next one, which is along the northwest arterial, like I said, two on northwest arterial, one on Romberg. The next one is more severe. That happened at northwest arterial and Asbury. So this is on the northern section of this traffic study placement between Pennsylvania and Holiday. Like I said, we, we looked at north, northwest arterial from, you know, that whole section all the way up to Central, basically. So again, this threshold over ten miles an hour would probably be less. So probably around twenty-five percent would be speeding if we're doing sixteen plus. But you still have your, your average volume there and people who are speeding as a total. Now, for this one, for northwest arterial and Asbury, this is the, this is how I calculated, you know, who, how many crashes are happening at this intersection. So we do, we do a grid or a circle or a square or whatever we want around that intersection. And we look at, you know, the past five years. So we see that there's seventy-seven crashes that happened at this intersection. We, we do have one suspected serious injury back in two thousand and twenty. And over half, or nearly half, are rear ends, which could happen near the intersection within the lanes, all those sorts of things. So that kind of breaks it down on how that happened. The severity, again, majority is, is property damage. And that includes animals. So if deers come across, things like that. The example that I had was a driver that was going northbound on northwest arterial and someone coming eastbound on Asbury. And that person ran the red light and hit the person going through their green as they were going north on northwest arterial. So we will take a look at this timestamp. This is kind of a, an icky view here, so I apologize. But I don't know if you can see my mouse. That doesn't matter. The person is coming fro, so we're looking south. So we're on the, we're on the north, that northeast corner there. So we're looking at the bank, if we're familiar with the area. So we're looking at the bank towards Aldi, kitty corner to us. And the people that we can see right next to us are the people going southbound. But the person going north, you can kind of see the crash happening in that second, in that right-hand image. The crash happened ten seconds after I saw the person come off of Asbury, Asbury Road. So again, we're gonna, we're gonna break that down. I did it for both drivers now. And I wanted to do this and explain a little, a little something. So the speed limit on Asbury to the city limits is thirty-five miles an hour. Now, the person was turning off of, he was basically coming out of Hy-Vee there. So they were turning and, you know, gunning it right through and made it to thirty-three miles an hour roughly for their, for their travel distance. So again, Asbury's pretty flat in this area. I was actually pretty surprised that, that they made it up to, up to speed. They also passed a lot of people that were already stopped because obviously, like I said, that person had a red light. So pretty, impressive in a bad way. Sorry. But the, the driver going north, at that ten seconds, they, they were at Peyton Drive. And they were going north on northwest arterial. And that is obviously a bigger, a bigger section there. So that's around nine hundred and fifty feet. Now, that says sixty-five miles an hour. But you are kind of, you know, it's not as flat. You're kind of going uphill. It's a little hilly on northwest arterial in certain areas. So I, that analysis, I don't really agree with. It could be, it could be less, less than that. And that's just the calculation that, that was determined from other things. And I looked at, you know, if we did eight seconds and a different time thing, and it, you know, it pops up as the same relative speed. So I just want to say that the speed and calculating it off of the cameras isn't always, you know, true to that of how fast they were going. You have to put in those geometric examples and analyze everything besides just, you know, the distance and the time. So that, that basically concludes my examples. And, you know, we, I just want to say again that we do look at multiple factors. That person, this was, if we go back to the timestamp, this was at eight AM. So there is a possibility of sun blindness. Again, doesn't matter what time of the day. It could be a medical thing, could be impaired, you know, drinking, drugs, tiredness, any sort of impairment for that, that would be distracted. So just taking that into consideration is, is definitely important. Krena?
Do you want me to go down to the podium?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay. Can you click for me?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I can do that.
That's the only thing I didn't think about.
One thing, is your mic on? It's kind of hard to hear you. Thank you.
Is that better?
This is better.
Okay.
All right. So I just wanted to give a brief history related to the court challenges to automated traffic enforcement across the state of Iowa. They go back to two thousand and eight. There have been eleven cases since that time. They have been in Iowa District Court, as well as the US Court of Appeals to the Eighth Circuit, so federal appeals court. They have involved both speed and red lights that have been challenged as those have been implemented across the state. The challenges that have been put forth have included constitutional claims related to due process, equal protection, privileges and immunities. And then also other state claims beyond constitutional claims that are preemption, unjust enrichment, unlawful delegation of police power, and then related to collection of fines or debt collection in the state offset program. Some of the arguments have been related to the constitutional scrutiny that ordinances should be subject to as they are being challenged or reviewed by the courts. And here's your primary and constitutional law, nine four- And here's your primer in constitutional law, nine forty-two on a Monday night. You have what's called rational basis scrutiny, intermediate scrutiny, and strict scrutiny. Um, strict scrutiny is obviously the most restrictive and the hardest for a government entity to meet in passing muster if something is challenged on a constitutional claim in court. Through these cases, the court has held that rational basis, rational, um, basis scrutiny applied. And the reason for that is because it was the government body exercising a police power. And the courts have ultimately held consistently throughout many of these cases is that no one can seriously question the power of a state or a municipality to impose speed limits on public highways because police power and public safety is an ultimate, you know, just basic government function, right? But what we did is we, we had all of this on our radar screen, and we've learned from what our colleagues across the state have been through or what they have done and how they have drafted over the years so that we could put together an, an ordinance that incorporated all of these pieces and what the court has said should or should not be done. So, for example, the most recent cases, the two thousand and twenty-three cases involving Des Moines and Windsor Heights, related specifically to debt collection and turning over unpaid automated traffic enforcement tickets to the State of Iowa Offset Program. And what the court held in both of those cases was that you could not automatically turn unpaid fines over to the offset program without reducing that to a judgment. So people got their day in court. So when you look at the, um, the ordinance that is before you for consideration this evening, we've taken these things into consideration. So you'll see, um, how the, um, where the speeds kick in and that it's differentiated by zones. And we've tried to be considerate of the fact that when we're talking about construction zones and school zones, talking about vulnerable populations that could be seriously hurt by speed. When you look at the notifications that go out, we have learned lessons from some of our colleagues where they perhaps, um, notices weren't being done in accordance with the Iowa code. Um, so we have learned from that as we've drafted this. And then, um, related to the debt collection, we have a plan in place that, uh, calls for a municipal infraction to be issued so that if someone challenges it, they can go through the informal review through the police department, or they can request that it automatically go to a municipal infraction. So we're giving people due process by letting them choose. Now, if they choose the informal review and a police officer upholds that violation, if we want to collect on that, we still have to reduce it to a judgment. So we're still going to go through the practice of taking it to the court and reducing it to a judgment that then can be enforced as if they had gone the municipal infraction route from the beginning. So, um, if you go to the next one, um, this summarizes the, uh, proposed ordinance. So again, in accordance with police power, um, the city can, um, implement an automated speed enforcement system for capturing images, um, for people who violate the posted speed limits, working with a contractor. Um, but we retain supervisory control over that operation and the process and how it works. We, uh, review the information that is provided to us, um, photographic, um, imagery, um, of the violations. Um, we review them and they're, upon independent review by a police officer, the violation is either confirmed or declined. If it is affirmed, then the contractor, um, would send that violation out, and it would have all of the proper notices for contesting that violation going to the vehicle owner. I think the next one starts with the first chart. So there are differences when enforcement kicks in based on the speed zone and the type of roadway. So here in this chart, if you have a speed zone or limit where it is less than forty-five miles an hour, but also where you have undivided highways, where it is forty-five miles an hour. So when you think about some of our divided highways, um, Dodge, that's forty-five, right? That's divided. So you've got some safety and space and distance and barriers and things of that nature. The Northwest Arterial is above forty-five miles an hour. Um, I think it's, I think we determined that the undivided highways in town where there is forty-five miles per hour as a speed limit, I think is one spot, if I remember correctly, and it's Peru Road near Roosevelt.
North of Roosevelt, yes.
Yeah. Um, so that, that's very, very limited, but we still wanted to capture it for purposes of this enforcement. So in these areas where the speed is lower, you'll see that the, uh, construction and school zone penalties will kick in at the six to ten mile per hour, uh, over, above the limit. And then the actual fine implementation starts at eleven fifteen through fifteen over. Again, these are our areas where you're to be more likely in a residential area or an area where there is a school, where you want people moving extra slow because of the potential safety hazards of excessive speed. So then if you go to the next slide, it is the divided highways with the speed forty-five miles an hour or higher. So this is your Dodge Street and your Northwest Arterial type areas. Um, you'll see that, again, the construction and school zone penalties will be implemented, uh, upon six miles over the limit. Uh, but at six through ten and eleven through fifteen, that is the only time that there would be a civil penalty through automated speed enforcement. The fines don't kick in for a standard violation in a run-of-the-mill stretch of road that would be, uh, enforced by, with the cameras until sixteen miles over the limit. Now, in both areas, you'll see that for the first offense, while a fine is listed, it indicates courtesy waiver. So there's essentially a, um, here's your notification, learn your lesson, type of scenario. So that hopefully people go, oh, okay, now I know where this is. I'm not going to let it happen again, and they can self-govern. Um, when you get to a second offense, again, just thinking that accidents happen kind of a thing, or you can be, um, inattentive in your driving or to your speed, um, a fifty percent reduction has been built in for a second offense. So that people can, uh, hopefully feel the sting a little bit, but not have it be a, um, significant financial impact. And then you'll see, um, as, as you get to a, a third offense, um, that, that option is no longer available. That's where you feel the, the full sting of implementation. Um, one thing to note going through these, um, these fines are less than what it would be if an officer issued the ticket. So, um, besides the fact that they're not counting against a driving record, the fines are less than if an officer pulled you over and issued you a uniform traffic citation. Um, you'll see that community service is listed on here in a number of different spots. Um, it starts at the third offense, if you're less than forty-five miles an hour. Um, and that's for eleven to fifteen and sixteen to twenty. If you are on the forty-five mile an hour or higher speed limit roadways, um, again, third offense, it's available for sixteen to twenty, but that is it. On a third, and then for a fourth offense, what you will see is the community service only becomes available if you are a low and moderate income individual, where you would feel the impact of that fine more significantly. Um, and you can also see where it goes from saying regular community service available to extra community service required, um, at the higher speeds over the speeding, uh, the speed limit. Um, again, to stress the importance of self-correcting or self-governing the behavior, um, but also not hitting people in the pocketbook so hard when they are of limited needs. Um, and so we spelled it out is, I, I think as clearly as we could in these charts so that no one could say that they, um, were unaware of what was going to happen based on the circumstance. And, um, I, the next thing, and I don't, am I doing the next slide or are you?
I will.
Okay, great.
I, I want to point out one thing. You see the community service here, so I want to point out, um, our office of, uh, uh, Community Impact, which Heather Satterley's here. She runs that. A couple of years ago, you created, um, approved the position for diversion, and that's in her office. And they're the ones that are going to be managing that because, um, yeah, they're the ones finding the community service that's part of this. So I wanted to put a face to, to what goes on with that. As I s, I said before, this, this is the ordinance that, that, City Attorney Brumwell just put together. But there's also policy that goes in, into that. I, I want to point out one thing before we get to that. So automated speed enforcement, like I said before, is not the only thing that goes in the traffic safety. There's the three, three Es: enforcement, engineering, and education. Uh, I talked about the enforcement, a couple of things that are going on with that that I want to talk about some projects. So at the Buick Police Department, we're doing concentrated, two big projects per month now, um, using our Governor Traffic Safety Bureau funds to try to do an impact through traditional enforcement. Again, this is not the twenty-four-seven thing, but this is something trying to make an impact at specific locations using some of our speed data, using some of our complaint data, and, and potentially using crash data on that. Second one is engineering, South Grandview Bryant School. You heard from people saying, this is dangerous. There's things going on there. Um, engineering department put that, uh, together, something very short order, uh, traffic calming. Essentially, that's what that was. Haven't heard of the higher speeds going, I haven't heard of a kid almost getting hit. I will point out that intersection, no kid's ever been hit there. This was a prevention thing. We don't want a kid to get hit there. And that, that's what I'm kind of pointing out here tonight is prevention. The other thing were more speed shields, the ones that don't do enforcement. You see those around, the flashing ones. Um, you're seeing more just the flashing signage around because it gets attention, stop signs. Um, definitely, that gets attention, using more of the speed shields, again, that don't do enforcement. The technology also with the speed games allow us not, not necessarily, it doesn't have to be turned on just for enforcement. It can be turned on for data, too. So you can do data. Um, but this is where we kind of get into the policy side of that. Um, again, transparency of where they're at. Uh, but transparency of where they're at, but when we place them looking at data, public safety need, using, uh, the crash data, using the speed data, traffic volume, complaints. One of the things that, you know, the state has not come up with anything good, solid concrete on this at this point. They talk about it every year, there hasn't been anything. But one thing that came out of one of the legislative things I saw this year was, uh, location not within a thousand feet of a speed change. That, that, pretty fair. I think the one that, um, we heard about Leclerc, that's pretty close to a speed change, you know? You hear about, um, some smaller towns around that have them literally like on speed chains, uh, speed change, just from like from fifty-five to thirty-five. That, that's, I don't think it's fair. I, I don't, and that's why I'm looking at this. Again, this isn't set in stone. I'm just talking about policy components that can go into this. Um, I talked about complete transparency, putting that out in many different ways that we can. You know, social media, website. If you drive around with your iPhone on the, the map site, it tells you when you come up on him. I know when I drive through Cedar Rapids, mine shows up and says, you know, speed enforcement ahead. Same thing happened out in DC when I was out there. We got to define how many days it's going to actually do non-enforcement before turning on the enforcement side of that. How many days of warning do we get? We're talking about two things, fixed systems and movable systems, right? So the fixed systems are pretty well-known in that. But if we do a movable, we put it in a neighborhood or in a school zone or something like that, is it, you know, how long do we put that out as part of our policy? Again, so it's not just, hey, I put it out for a day, put it out for three days. What is it? I don't know. Uh, we're not wanting people to guess. We'll put it out very clearly as part of the policy. Policy, what to do with the revenues, you know? Um, again, that's, that's a contentious point. Traffic safety, um, that has a budgetary impact is what's been proposed, to how we spend that. Um, again, that's not my thing as a chief. I don't, that's not where I go with that. You know, my job is to do the, the, um, safety part of that. So how do we measure effectiveness? I mean, that's important. We need to know, is this working? Um, initially, when I, my proposal is being to provide quarterly reports in the first year and then coupled with an annual report. You see that from some of the cities. You saw Davenport's and Cedar Rapids annual reports on what to do there. And then requirements of the vendor. And I think this is part of the, the RFP process is that you say, you know, such as data retention, uh, what are they doing with the data? What kind of oversight can we, we have on the, on the data that's out there? Um, but that, that, again, that's a very important part. ACL, you pointed this out, and I think that is the very complete, because we're talking about civil liberties. We're talking about, you know, drivers', uh, rights, uh, and constitutional rights. So, um, that's, that's a very important part of this. Like I said, this, this is not the only thing we're doing for traffic safety. I just want to point that out. And I want to point that out that this is just a, in closing, just for me as the police department, this is a force multiplier that works twenty-four-seven. And it works in locations that may be unsafe, uh, making the locations that, you know, um, make it more safe for my officers to be out and about and doing some of the enforcement efforts. So with that, I'll, ready for the questions.
Thank you, Chief. Yeah, Mr. Sprank, go ahead.
Chief, I have a question as to, I'm really concerned over if this gets approved, uh, that possible confusion over the ability to, to drive up to sixteen miles versus, versus eleven miles over the P, over the posted speed limit. I mean, why do we come up with this idea of sixteen? I mean, that's nearly sixty-five miles an hour. Uh, they're already doing way over it. It, I, I just feel like, so we're being generous by giving a leeway. Um, I really like it to be, if this gets approved, one consistent leeway, like just do eleven miles, period, across the entire city. What's the reasoning with the sixteen? If I know?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead, Jeremy. Uh, City Manager Mike Van Milligan. So, uh, when we did the traffic studies, um, that you had received detail on at previous meetings also, one of the shock factors, uh, for some members of the community, and I would say including me, is how fast people were going. And, um, so we wanted to concentrate our efforts on the divided highways of, that already have an over forty-five mile an hour speed limit. You look at the Northwest Arterial, well, I hope everybody goes the speed limit. They don't. Um, and, uh, we think you could make a reasonable argument that who you're really trying to impact on those four-lane divided highways with a speed limit of over forty-five are the people that are going very fast. And so we provided that leeway of an extra five miles an hour. Um, and, but in the neighborhoods, we felt like, well, that's, that's absolutely not reasonable. If it's a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit in a two-lane, uh, neighborhood, we don't want people going fifteen miles over the speed limit and still being okay. The, uh, the other thing is that, remember, this is only the automated speed enforcement component. A police officer has one hundred percent discretion. And so if it was, uh, issued by an officer, it would be at any speed that the officer determines is not safe. And of course, that has a lot to do with traffic conditions, volumes, and, you know, snow and all these other rain and all these other kinds of things. And, and I really don't think it's creating confusion for the public. Because if somebody, let's say they're in the over forty mi, five miles in a divided highway and they're going the eleven to fifteen and they don't get one of these, well, then they just don't get one. It's not as if somehow they were measuring themselves and saying, oh, I know I can go fourteen over on this street and I can only go eleven over on this street. I don't think that people really are going to think like that. So I don't think we're creating the confusion. I could understand the argument that it ought to be consistent across all places in the community. We thought that in those higher-speed areas, we should concentrate on the higher-speed drivers.
Okay. One other question, if it gets approved, how big would the signages be? Any idea?
Well, that'll be your, that'll be part of the policy. So as, as the chief mentioned, uh, what we're asking you to do tonight is vote on the ordinance, and then we would have to bring back a policy to you which would go into the minutia of, you know, how long do you, like, how long do you give the advance notice that's coming up? Either time-wise and distance-wise, you know, where the speed zone cameras are. So, yeah, tho, those, those will all be policy things that you would adopt.
If I may, one thing I just want to point out about the policy is it's hard to have a policy in place at this point because we don't have a vendor. We need to do an RFP, and we need to go out. And there are some things or questions that could be vendor- could be vendor-specific. So while we have a list of things and considerations and things of that nature, we have not gone so far into that at that point, because we would, we don't know who we would be working with if this were to pass.
Right, right. Thank you.
Related, the ordinance, since Krenn brings up the vendor idea, you know, we don't know if, how many responses will get to our request for proposals. So for instance, the fact that the first violation is a courtesy ticket, you know, that's what we do on our parking violations, it's a courtesy ticket on the first one on any license plate, and we'd be doing the same thing here. So we're, it's like a super notification system. Not only is there going to be signage and advertising and all those other things, but the first time you do it, you get a courtesy ticket in the mail, just said, "This happened to you, and you would have gotten this fine if you hadn't gotten this courtesy ticket, and you will get fines in the future if you do it again." So it's sort of like a super notification system. And, you know, of course, people who are just passing through our community one time, that's all they'll ever get, is a courtesy notification.
Thank you.
Ms. Russell?
Thank you. I was looking at the chart, and I wondered if, is there a timeframe on the first, second, third offense? I mean, like, if I get a ticket this year and I get a ticket next year, is that?
No, there is no timeframe. So it's by your license plate. Now, vehicles do change license plates. I don't know what the Department of Transportation cycle is, but there are, as license plates fade or whatever, they do replace license plates. So you could end up getting a second chance or a third chance, or, but, but, but no, there is no timeframe on the license plate itself.
So I had another question for you, for you, Mike, and I know we're not going to have a policy discussion, but there's something I kind of wanted to clarify a bit before we have a final vote. I wondered if you could reiterate your thoughts on budgeting revenue? I mean, I know, this is a safety issue, and it's not about, it's not about revenue. I want to make sure we don't have like a quota or a budget item to fill. How do we approach that? I mean?
Sure. My intent in this particular revenue source would be that, first of all, that the money would be dedicated to traffic safety, so that would be in the policy. And secondly, that each budget year, we would budget whatever the previous year revenue was. So for instance, in this next cycle budget that's coming up, which will come to you in March and April, and starts July 1st, that budget, the number would be zero, because we won't have any experience by then. It won't be a projected saying, "Oh, we think we're going to get this much revenue, so let's budget it," and then be surprised that it didn't happen, if it doesn't. And then so the next fiscal year, which would be March, April of 2025, when we'd be going through that cycle, then we would look at, okay, well, what did we get in the last year before we submitted the proposal, the proposed budget? So not the last fiscal year, but basically the last 12 months, or the last year before the proposal was put together, which is put together like January, February, and it comes to you in March and April. And so we'd always be looking back at what the revenues actually were, and that's what would go into the budget.
Great, thank you. And can I ask one more question?
Absolutely.
The community service component, can a person use that for the whole fee? Or, I know for some people, $100 might be hard to come up with all at once. Can you do a payment plan or something? Or can you, can you say, "Hey, I can't pay this by month, you know, March 1st, but I could pay it, you know, over two months," or, how does, how does that work?
That's not our proposal.
Okay.
So our proposal is they could do community service to get a 50% discount in the beginning. So remember, the first violation is no penalty. The second violation is automatically, and I'm talking about the lower speeds now, not the upper speeds. The lower speeds, it's, a second violation is automatically a 50% discount.
Okay.
And then the third violation at the lower speeds is, everybody has the opportunity to do community service to get to the 50% discount. And then after you get over that to the fourth violation and beyond, then only low-income individuals have the chance to do community service to get a 50% discount.
Thanks for that clarification. Thank you.
Streisand?
Thank you very much. So I do want to double down on what the police chief said, they could chief Jensen about slowing this thing down. Here we are, I sure hope we don't approve this just tonight, at this time of year, Thanksgiving, people are thinking about the holidays coming up. I think we need more time. Look at that, that was an hour presentation with all the different facts. I appreciate that. But there's a lot to take in, there's a lot for our citizens to take in. One citizen sat here for over two hours, waiting to give his five-minute. And I hope that we've all been reading some of the excellent emails, thoughtful, really well-done. Our citizens are giving us their hard, their time to let us know why they think what they think. I'm not going to, you know, some, my question for you, Chief, or whatever, it could be for city staff or anybody here. First of all, what is, what percentage of local crashes were, had excessive speed indicated?
And that's the part I was trying to explain to you earlier, that is very difficult to tell. And I think that's what Justine also kind of referred to. We don't. And then that's the reactive side, so I want to point to that. That's the reactive side. We're trying to prevent that from happening with some of the speed.
I do remember you saying that. So Mr. Van Milligan, your memo said excessive speed was a contributing factor in almost all of these crashes. I was just wondering where you got your data.
Chief.
That was the fatal crashes.
Oh.
Fatal crashes.
Were you talking about fatal crashes in your memo?
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry for that. I'm sure that excessive speed. Also, I was reading a whole bunch of this, and also, people who died in crashes, 60% of them weren't wearing seat belts, too. That's, there's so many major things that are issues in driving in America and in Dubuque. So I want to, I want to thank you for that information. In Cedar Rapids, they have, from July 2019 to December 2022, only 53% of those citations have been paid. So my question to you, in your experience, does a camera company get paid on the basis of violations or paid tickets?
That, I don't know. That's going to be part of the policy part, and that's the part we're building into, to here.
Okay, that's a big difference.
Well, and that's why the ordinance that Attorney Brumwell had pointed out has the ability to kick that to the municipal infraction side on the unpaid side of this. Am I correct on that? Yep.
Yeah, I believe it's paid tickets, but we can verify that.
Thank you. And when you showed your economically disadvantaged, I mean, the crash data indicates that economically disadvantaged area right along Central Avenue. And, and, you know, you talked about equitable fine and fees, and we're trying to do what we can. But in Section F of the ordinance, it says the municipal infraction will be charged if they don't pay it right away, plus penalty, fees, costs. I mean, it is going to be very much like some of the things that the city council has, you know, in 2020 made that one of our top priorities, is to see what we could do about fines and fees, especially in the areas that I mentioned, economically disadvantaged areas. The other thing, as long as I'm talking about the ordinance, ordinance number, whereas number two, it says that this is a cost-effective mechanism for the enforcement of speed laws. I'm just wondering, we just heard that this enforcement, that the data that we gathered, where we're approximately $2 million would have come in for infractions, $2 million, if we could hire three staff, now you say it's difficult, I get it. But that's about three traffic officers, maybe $500,000 a year for salaries and benefits and all that, where we're getting $2 million a year. The thing is, they're asking about where this money is going to go. I'm asking, where is this money coming from? Right? So obviously, it's coming from, you know, it says, well, minimum or no cost to the city. Well, in my church, we say, "The building is of the church, we are the church." And I think of the citizens of the city as the city of Dubuque. All right, so there is minimal to no cost to the city, no. I think there's big. But let me get back to the questions, because I know that others want questions before I start talking about things. So I'm glad we have some traffic engineers here. And if you were to be asked, "How can we reduce the average speed in these troubled areas?" Would you, would you think of speed enforcement cameras? Or would you talk about surface texture and visual devices, raised pavement areas, reduced street area, and many more? And as I talked about earlier, are there any cities that have done the ticket cameras would be the last resort? Do you know of any, Chief? That they've delayed things? I appreciate how you've delayed things. We gave you a boatload of stuff to look at, and you've done your best to give us that. But I'm just wondering if you know of any city that might have been doing that and said, you know, "We're not just, we're just not ready for traffic cameras, because we've already done, we need to do this, this, and this first."
Like I said before, there's three E's to traffic safety, and not one of them alone is a standalone. And we can't enforce our way out of that project. We can't engineer our way out of that project, and we can't educate our way out of that project. Now, as far as cities, I don't know of any, but I am sure there's cities that said, "Let's try engineering." That's cost. It's expensive, and it's very expensive. And I'm sure they've tried that on most, and I'm sure there's some that just said absolute no to speed enforcement cameras, or any automated enforcement. You know, again, I think each city is unique and different, and I think each city, we have to look at what our ultimate goal is.
All right. Can I add to the answer, please? So the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration says there's only, they rate things on one to five stars, with five stars being an effective method. They only rate two things as an effective method: speed limits and automated enforcement. They rank no things as four stars, and on three stars, they rank public information. So we have, you have the answer to that question from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, that it's speed limits and it's automated enforcement. Those are the only two things that work.
Was traffic calming in that study, they asked them about traffic calming? That's, I guess that's my question. And very quickly, because I know that others want to speak and ask questions, but for me, I understand about the staff shortage. But the vendor who was here last time said he doesn't know of a city, that once they got speed cameras installed, that they took them out. So to me, staff shortages, staff shortage is temporary, but ticket cameras are forever. And so those, that's why I would like to do everything possible that we could do. And finally, I saw in the, in the ordinance, G4, it said, you know, you, this won't count against you if you're in a funeral procession. Now, I've been in some, several funeral processions, and they're not speeding. So maybe this isn't supposed to go with red light cameras, because I get that. But I'm just wondering why it would be in there?
Because there's a specific provision in the code related to funeral processions. And when you go through an intersection with a light, people, even though they can just keep going with the procession, when the light changes, they panic, and so they speed up and go through. So it's, it is related to the red lights, but it's actually speed-related, because people don't, they want to stay with the procession as opposed to getting stuck.
Interesting. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Jones?
Well, I think you all know that I've supported this for a long time. One of our conversations was about license plates and privacy a while back. It was more towards the license plate readers, but just last week, the Iowa Supreme Court upheld two cases about the sanctity of the license plate, and that the entire surface of it must be visible, for the purpose of holding the driver of the car responsible for their actions. That's why they were first legislated years ago, and that's really what this is all about. Historically, in speed enforcement, just about everything that law enforcement thought up, some people thought wasn't fair. Like in the 1920s, when they started putting cops on motorcycles, hiding them behind billboards and sneaking up on you and catching you. In the 50s, when radar started to become widely used. In the 60s, it was aircraft, and some of their tollways, the only tollway, you got a ticket when you got on, and you handed that in when you got off, and they calculated your toll based on the miles you traveled on the tollway, but they also calculated your speed. And if you were really excessive, they'd have a trooper come and talk to you. In the 70s, we had handheld radar in VASCAR, which was a time-distance computer that didn't send out radar. Of course, along with that came us cottage industry of radar detectors, and this detector and that detector. Not related to speed, but in the 80s, we instituted community-oriented policing. We put cops on bicycles, and I took care of a guy that was injured resisting arrest, and he whined all the way to the hospital about how unfair it was that cop caught up to him on a bicycle. But it was new. Also, in the 70s, unmarked cars became popular with state police agencies that are largely charged with speed enforcement, and clean-top cars that are fully marked but no light bars and apparatus on the top, it's a little harder to pick out of traffic. In the 90s, it was lasers, also aircraft, that was in the 60s. So we've got all these things, and every time they came up with a new way to try and manage speed, a number of people protested, and they think it was wise or fair. But in every case, legislatively and judicially, they've been upheld as, "What else are you going to do?" And that's where we're at now, "What else are you going to do?" We've got officers in cars, and we've got high-visibility vehicles, but we haven't got enough of them, and we never will. I think if we were at full staff, we'd still be talking about this, because what call do you get more than anything else from citizens? "People are speeding down my street." The second most that you get is motorcycles are too loud, or loud exhaust are keeping me up. And the third is everything else. But by far, what people talk to us about is speeding traffic. I do get the impression there's a large number of folks that would like a speed enforcement camera in front of their house, but not where they drive. That's just not fair. We've had a lot of discussion about this. February 6th was our first council meeting where it was introduced, but prior to that, we had a letter from the North End Neighborhood Association concerned about speeds on Central and White Street, and suggesting lowered speed limits and everything. At that meeting, I said, "You know, the only way you could do that, because of the density of housing, the density of parking, the density of traffic, the fact that they're two-lane streets with traffic moving consistently and solidly in each direction, is with remote enforcement of some kind." And we had a little discussion about that, and shortly after that, your recommendation came to us, unrelated to that conversation. So this is really our fifth discussion at this table about automatic speed enforcement. And we had quite a few conversations some years ago about automatic traffic enforcement. We were talking about red light cameras, and all the things we talked about then are still valuable, are still valid. I think what's important in what's going on here tonight, isn't as much what we do, but how we do it. And you've taken a year to figure out how to recommend that we do it. And between the police chief and the city manager, we're talking about signage, warning you that there's enforcement ahead, and we're going to put that in our policy. Talking about public safety, public service announcements, and social media postings, and press releases, saying that there's going to be a device here, a device there, and there's one all the time here, so please don't go get a ticket. We're giving away the first one, we're giving a discount on the second one. Those things may cost us the opportunity to move ahead, we may have to take another look at that. The vendors may say, "I don't think so, you're not going to make any money." And if you don't make any money, we're not going to make any money, and that's, that's a problem. And we do have citizens that think it's a money grab. They're just plain wrong. In my heart, it's not a money grab, it's about public safety, where I spent my entire working career working. I've had, unlike anybody else in this council, I've had my hands on people as they die of collision injuries. And they don't just change that person's life, they change that whole family's life, they change a person's workplace's life, they change things for they change a person's workplace's life, they change things forever when people are grown up in a traffic crash. The fact that it's going to be officer-reviewed in every single case, that a sworn peace officer is going to have to watch the video and watch the, watch the video and photographic evidence, and make a determination if a violation has occurred before okaying that summons. The thresholds are extraordinarily generous, 11 miles per hour or 16 miles per hour, and the community service options, all these things. You know, if we do the signage, we do all the PR stuff. So you drive past the sign, and then you still get the ticket, you know, a quarter mile down the road, you kind of ask for it twice. You had every opportunity to not get that ticket, to never get that ticket. I guess I'm not going to mind if this produces a little bit of revenue, because it's being produced by people that are violating the law, that are causing harm and danger to the rest of us. And if we have to take some money out of their pocket to educate them and get them to change their behavior, that's great. And I hope we don't issue very many tickets. I hope that it works the way that I think it will, that people are just going to get used to the idea and slow down. Certainly worked on I-380, that S curve in Cedar Rapids. There's no, no denying that traffic is moving slower there than it ever has, and clearly safer if they've reduced their fatalities by that amount of numbers. That's, that's really impressive. We're kind of late to the party on this. Most of the other major cities in Iowa have had it and had it for years. Most major metropolitan areas across the country have used it for years. And looking at the history of speed enforcement, and the devices and the tactics used, this is what's now. This is what's next. And, you know, or well in, I think, would be if a trooper pulled up behind you and plugged into your black box and said, I didn't see you, but you were going 80 miles an hour back there, here's your ticket. This isn't that. This isn't arbitrary or capricious. This is, here's a sign telling you, slow down, or we're going to write you a ticket, and here's a device that's going to write you a ticket if you don't slow down. We have to do this. We have to slow this traffic down, because I think we have done everything else that we can do. I think we've put the officers out there as best we can, we've done traffic enforcement programs, concentrates on a small area for a small period of time, and does slow the traffic down for a week or two, but then it creeps back up. If you look at DOT collision reports for fatal accidents, the number one cause of the illist is lane departure. And there's two reasons for lane departure. One is excessive speed, and one is distraction. Now, if you're distracted at 25 miles an hour, you've got a chance of looking up in time before you hit the vehicle in front of you. If you're distracted at 70 miles an hour, you're going to leave your lane, you're going to crash into something. There's, there's no other potential result. So this isn't about money. This is about community safety. This is about some people not dying in our community. It's about some people not having their lives changed forever due to critical life-changing injuries. This is about doing it as gently and conscientiously and humanely as we can. And this is a year's work that a whole lot of people have done to get us to right here tonight, where we've got something that we can advance that, that is going to help. And it's going to cause a few people some harm, but I think we've got all kinds of safety nets there to not harm them very much. So I wholeheartedly support this ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Ms. Mayor. So as a follow-up to the problem solving that was just discussed by my colleague, Mr. Jones, I think it's really important to kind of step back and have an appreciation for the innovative technologies that are being used and are here to stay. And as an example, our iPhones, artificial intelligence, drones, GPS systems, even the street smart traffic routing that we had talked about tonight, and Google, Google Maps. We all use them, and it is the wave of the future. And I think the problem solving is going to be how to use these tools effectively, and what are the best tools for us? And there's just a lot recently by the National League of Cities and other organizations that we are involved with that really talk about the benefits to corporations and to municipalities for these emerging technologies. And as simple as public-facing email responses, presentations, and research, we now have an opportunity to take a look at manpower gaps. And with the general understanding that this is a very safe technology to use, there is a lot in the cloud that prevents and keeps us from cybersecurity attacks, and there's just an enormous amount of public safety here. And I agree that it is our number-one priority here in the city is public safety, and this is just another initiative here to get us in that right path. But it is not going to go away, and it is something that we need to address as well, and it is the wave of the future. And I agree that we do need to slow the speeds down within the city, and I just remember the conversation that we had had about the deaths on the arterial that occurred, not this year, but last year, and that from my, from my point of view, one fatality is one too much. I do want to give a shout-out, though, to all of the residents who not only sent us emails, but those that I had conversations with today and over the weekend. And there are a couple of questions that I would, if I could, just ask you on their behalf. For example, some of the trucking companies feel that it's a nuisance to have the ASEs, because sometimes they might have a driver that may have committed the speeding, but may no longer work for them. And so they indicated, my gosh, that's just a nuisance to me. So I know that for car dealerships, you might have a clause in the ordinance that gives them some flexibility. I just wondered about the trucking companies, if there is any flexibility there.
Well, I think that the interesting thing with trucking, it's a little different issue. That's so highly regulated. So I kind of want to point out with, like, trucking, a lot of that, even their, like, their log sheets, it'll show that they're speeding, they're GPS-tracked. So their companies know they're speeding before then. Back to that, well, we let them go, and they're speeding. Like I said, I think there's ability for, this is, again, as we move forward, policies, policies for private industries to build that into their own policy to say, this is how I'm going to recoup this, this is how I'm going to address this. Like I said, Enterprise Rental already has it in there, because it was in the clause that I had that said this happened. So, I mean, there's ability, I think, for them to do that, because I don't think we can regulate everything they do with that. But I think, again, there's, the trucking industry in and of itself has a lot to it, and they have a lot vested in, I mean, that same speeder. It is, it, they'll have things on log sheets that show-
Sure.
-the many violations.
Right. But the point was that that person may have just left the company. Whether or not they were fired or not would be a different story. And one thing, Mike, you had talked about, the, the traffic safety funding that we would potentially be able to do, use with our revenues. I think it would be nice if the budget decreased every year. In other words, if the revenues decreased because people were adhering to the caution and to speeding less. And then I just wanted to talk about, and I know it's a policy issue, on speed kills or whatever the campaign might be. Just wanted to know if by chance we will have an opportunity to talk about that kind of promotion and the details behind it, and the traffic calming, things that we can do with the rumble strips, the, the speed shields, and the public service announcements. I mean, I really look forward to seeing how that can be set up and actually practiced. I think that's a key to the success. But those are the points I just wanted to make, and I just really am just trying to reassure everybody that this is not going to go away, as has been previously said. This is really the wave of the future, and that artificial intelligence is safe, and especially if it's cloud-based, there is enormous amount of security, very level after level after level there to ensure that it's a safety for the public from a personal point of view, as well as from a traffic point of view. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barbara. I want to follow up on one thing that I heard, heard you say, because I want, I want clarification on it, and maybe this is for you, Corinna. We don't have any flexibility in this ordinance as it's written for rental agencies, correct? I mean, they are, they're going to be fined in the same way that anybody else would be for the license plate that's-
Correct.
So, so their, their decision they have to make is if they're going to pass that on to the driver, as the chief has suggested, was in his contract with Enterprise, I guess it was, this weekend?
Correct. But, Mr. Mayor, I thought the conversation was for car dealerships.
Yeah, and that was one, we talked about that at one point in time, and the current version of the ordinance doesn't have that.
So it didn't include, because I remember specifically that conversation, that's why I had asked.
Got it. So, so car, so thank you for that clarification. So car dealerships will be treated the same as any other rental car agency?
Yes.
Their license plate will be, will be photographed, and if that car is speeding-
Yes.
Okay.
And one of the questions, you know, how do you start to differentiate who gets a carve-out because of that?
Okay. So that's clear. Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Wethel, I think you were left, right?
Uh, yeah. Just a couple of questions. One is, and these are questions voiced to me by constituents. There were statements about critiques of our current speed limits in certain areas of our city. Just for clarification, I wondered how, if you could give just a brief statement, Gus or someone, about how we come up with specific speed limits for certain areas of town, if there is a standard that we follow. Sorry, Gus, I stuck around so late, I gotta-
[laughing]
Or someone.
Gus Sehoya, city engineer. So what we do is we look at the area, so specifically residential streets are automatically 25. So then on collectors and arterials, we look at the 85th percentile, and then that's the speed limit that typically it's set at or close to that. But then, then we look at the geometry of the roadway, the vertical geometry, the horizontal. We look at bicycles in the area, we look at all kinds of different things for safety. So it's a safety thing that we consider. So we look at the 85th percentile going back to that. That's the speed that 85% of the people are going below that speed, or 15% are going over that speed. And so we look at that for, that's what traffic engineers do, geometry. Then we look at the pedestrian safety, the bicycles, we look at all that stuff, and then determine the speed on a particular roadway.
Is there ever a reason to readdress that?
Yeah, we have been. It's not that often that people ask that, and then we do, Justine, or the traffic engineer at the time, they'll do a speed study and then help determine if the, the speed should change in that area. And we've changed speeds periodically. I can't tell you anything off the top of my head, but we do change speeds, maybe five miles an hour here or there.
Okay. And so, in essence, if moving forward, we would have folks start to pay attention to their speed more and, and regulation more, and contact me and say, Katie, I think that this area of town is, the speed limit is inappropriate, or something. I could direct them to our engineering department, and if we started to get enough feedback from community members, we could say, oh, well, maybe we'll go back and, and do a study for that area.
We could do a speed study very easily.
Yeah, okay.
And typically, they ask about lowering the speed, not raising the speed, but-
Sure.
-they might be raising, asking to raise the speed in this case, so.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do want to say I received some feedback from constituents regarding wanting specific data on crash data. And so I appreciate tonight that we were given examples of why it is very difficult to come up with a statistically significant way to look backwards, because we don't have current automation that allows us to look at speed, and that it would be very difficult to really dial that in, in the very specific areas that we want to look at and where we have done the studies. But I, I do appreciate what you've done in calculations that are beyond my ability, certainly in my professional life, to look at those kind of things. So I do, I do appreciate it.
Can I make a quick comment on that?
Yeah.
Department of Transportation, Iowa Department of Transit recognizes that the data is tough. They're actually going around training officers how to, you saw that list, what they're really looking for, trying to get some consistency. As you can imagine, 99 counties and how many officers, it's very inconsistent. So they are looking at that. That was, came up earlier this year at the conference, as I said, and they, we actually started training our officers on it in the beginning of the summer, so.
Thank you. You know, I really appreciate that I get to sit in this space with people who are really thoughtful and come from different backgrounds of profession and different ways that they see the world through their own lens. And specifically, I think Mr. Jones' experience as a paramedic for 31 years has voiced very eloquently his passion for safety and his, his experience and how that does somewhat craft his decisions. I've been a nurse and nurse practitioner, and I worked in cardiothoracic surgery for part of my career, and we did routine heart and lung surgery, but also responded to chest and vascular trauma. And so that includes people who were pedestrians hit by vehicles. It includes middle-of-the-night folks that I can't even hardly believe they made it to an operating room. And although in medicine, you should never let one experience alone change your practice or your own perspective, you never forget those things. You just don't. And, and I, I appreciate that no one knows that more than Mr. Jones. When we talk about crash data, like I said, in 2022, Dubuque PD investigated 1,510 motor vehicle accidents. So when we're looking at data, I know those are not all speed-induced, but if we can take a fraction of those away, that, to me, is what we're talking about here. I'm not talking about taking 1,500 MVAs away from our community, but I'm talking about taking a percentage of them away so that we can change that workload for our officers so that they can do one-on-one policing with our community in really important ways. We talked about all the data, which I, I really appreciate, and especially the University of Chicago study that found the 15% reduction in fatality and severe injury crashes with automated speed enforcement. There's no reason for me to think that data from the CDC or studies such as these that are statistically significant would not somehow translate into Dubuque, Iowa. I mean, that's why we do studies, that's why we do data, that's why we collect it and we interpret it. And so importantly, in the University of Chicago study, as you spoke earlier, Chief, the establishing of good policy and placement of signs to minimize the disproportionate impact on people of color and those living in poverty, to me, that's where we need to be sure that when we're crafting this, that we are so thoughtful about it. And I feel like we can be, and I feel like we've done the work to start that process. We're not done, though, but we'll get there. I understand the hesitancy of an outside company. I do. I can appreciate that it's our responsibility, though, to create the checks and balances, again, in the policy as we would write it, or as we would vote for it. I personally had concerns about how revenue would be spent. The decision to place the funds in a traffic safety capacity, to me, will only further ensure the safety of our roadways for the next technology that we will need to implement, and it will be more over and over again. We will be back here talking about how technology can make our community safer in important ways, at the same time, considering how we impact that related to our constituent concerns. I understand that this decision might be very politically unpopular, but I am not here to gain popularity, I'm here to do the right thing. I believe this decision will change behavior, it will keep our officers safe, and it will keep our families safe. And so I do intend to support the next step, but certainly, I want to fully engage in my constituents' concerns as we craft what is to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Russell?
Thanks. I had a few comments in addition to my earlier questions, and I'm very pleased to see the time that we've taken and the research that's been done. We've asked a lot of questions, and I think that they've all been folded into this proposal, including some of the comments that were made here this evening or that came to us through email. But I came from a career in a safety-focused industry, and I know that safety is something that you- that you have to do every day. It's, it's proactive, it's risk management. You might get away with unsafe driving once, twice, many times, but that doesn't mean that the hazard isn't there just because there wasn't a crash this time. There may be one next time. So, for example, those young people that were killed on the Northwest Arterial, I'm sure we don't think it's the first time they were ever driving at a high rate of speed. If we can help prevent that kind of thing from happening again, it could be you, or could be your family member or my family member that's saved. Yeah, sometimes safety is inconvenient, takes longer to do it the right way, follow the speed limit, wait till you get to your destination to make that call or text, but we all benefit because traffic, traffic laws are for everyone and traffic offenders are a risk to everyone's safety. And so if, if you're a business owner, do you want your employees and your customers to drive in a community that's safe? Do you want your family and friends at risk from others when they're on the road? We know there are speeding concerns and there are many people, many people in my ward who contact me regularly about speeding concerns in their neighborhood. I live near the Northwest Arterial and I hear the racing up and down that road all the time. So this to me is about safety. It's not about revenue, it's not about issuing as many tickets as we can, although if it helps in the long run to reduce the speeding, I'm, I'm all for it. I think this is a low-cost tool that has many benefits for our residents and our officers, which we have to keep in mind as well. It doesn't solve all the problems. You know, there are certainly other, other things we can do, and perhaps the information that we'll gain from this tool will help us craft some of those other measures, find out where the speeding is happening most, is it going down, is this tool doing what it should? And so I'm looking forward to voting for this and then carefully crafting that policy so that we get the information, the goals that we want and the information that we need from the, from that tool and make our community safer for all of our residents. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Any other closing comments?
Mr. Mayor, just one quick one. Do you have to thank the, the folks that wrote today, the gentlemen that spoke tonight? They were eloquent and kind and respectful. And of all the things that we need in this world right now, that's, that's probably the, the number one need. I only had one guy that was quite unfriendly in his comments, but I've, most of the people I've had conversations with support this in some fashion.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Well, you know, one of my biggest concerns in this entire process has been making this decision responsibly. And it's been mentioned several times tonight, how long we've had this discussion. Tonight, we're going on two hours. And that is what we've done in other times as well. I've had comments every once in a while, some people like to give me a good ribbing at times about how long these meetings go. And one of the things that I think is really important when we are living in a representative democracy is that if we're going to be put in this position by the will of the voters to represent their needs in the best way possible, we better give it the time that it takes to do that. And sometimes, yeah, it goes on a little bit long, I'll agree. But other times, I think it's really important that we make the points we need to make, that you give the presentation you need to make, that we get the opportunity to say all of our piece in what we're going to be doing. We've had this conversation for over a year. And in that conversation, I have personally gone back and forth a little bit. And what was really important to me, though, was that when we finally got to this point where we're going to make a decision, and I, and I hope that tonight is that night, that we, that we got there by doing the work that it really takes to make sure that we do this in a responsible fashion as a city government. I think the biggest problem with this issue right now is trust. It's trust in us, it's trust in governments. And I think that there are cities abusing that trust. Some of them are in Iowa, some of them are in other places, and they're making this harder because they are setting things at like one mile over the speed limit, right after you change from 55 to 35 as you go into a town. That's not fair, and it, it's not a good way to build trust. That is a money grab, in my opinion, and I do think it is something that's much more about revenue than it is about safety. I think what we've got before us tonight is one of, I think it's one of the most responsible ordinances about automated speed enforcement cameras that I've seen, and especially, I think, in the state of Iowa. I think we can be an example here for others to follow and for our legislators to take a look at when they want to look at this again this year. It is a concern of mine that we have a legislature that has talked about automated speed enforcement pretty frequently. But what I hope they can see in this, and what I hope we can have good productive discussions about is the fact that this, this as written, which I think is going to pass tonight based on what I'm hearing here at this table, as written, I think, has provided public input for over a year. It's got transparency, it's got thoughtful, responsible ways of looking at this, it's focused on speed over revenue, it's fair to drivers, it's providing safety to drivers and bicyclists and pedestrians all over the community. So I really do think that, I, I think that this is a great ordinance as it's written. And I'm looking forward to having a conversation about the policy. I think there's a lot to talk about yet in the policy, not to, we need, you know, more long meetings. But I do think that there are some things that we need to discuss about how we can actually effectively change people's behavior and where we can do that best in our city and what we need to do and how we need to protect people's data and people's rights, just the same way we did with the, with the automated license plate readers. So I'm going to vote for this tonight, and, and I do appreciate all the work that you've put into this, Chief, Krenna, everybody who's worked on this. Justine, thank you very much for the presentation and everything that you've been doing. This is, I think, it's been a ton of work, it's been a lot of discussion, and I've appreciated every moment of it. And going back to the final point for Mr. Jones made just now about all the input that we've received. I know that in, in voting for this, I'm disagreeing with a lot of the folks that did provide that input, but I agree, it was really thoughtful. It made me think every single time, and it stopped me to, to make me really consider whether these points were enough to vote against this and not actually have something like this in our city. But at this point, I'm, I'm convinced, I've seen enough, I'm, I'm ready to vote for this, and I, and I really do appreciate the work we've put into it. And I'm looking forward to future discussions on how we can continue to do this well. So with that, let's go ahead and have this vote. We have a motion on the table here to receive and file, waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell?
Aye.
Resnick?
No.
Wethel?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Sprank.
We have a motion by Jones, second by Sprank. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell?
Aye.
Resnick?
No.
Wethel?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
That motion passes six to one.
We will move on to council member reports.
All right. I know we all do very good work when we're not here, but you know, we also have a closed session, so just keeping that in mind as we decide to give very fast reports this evening. Yes, Ms. Farber?
So very quickly, I was honored to represent Dubuque last week at the National League of Cities for the telecommunications, the I T C Committee, which does advocacy. And actually, we put our legislative agenda together to pass on to the F C C and legislators last week on behalf of broadband facilities and some of the programs going on, on the federal level. And then I was also very honored to present for the conference information, and I was part of a panel for the Raze Grant that we received and sharing information about the application process, about building the bridges, about the roundabouts and the street, complete street program, et cetera. And it was very, very well received and just a lot of nice feedback from the panel and the audience about the future opportunities for Raze Grants for many of the other participants of the conference. So that was my week.
Thank you for taking that time. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Since we were here, there's been an election, so welcome back, David, Katie and Laura. Congratulations, it's revealing. I had the honor the other, last week of attending a breakfast for legislators on brain health hosted by the Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque, and it was focused on, on the needs of youth and the, one of the takeaways I thought was pretty neat, they had some metrics on how the brain health retreat rooms have been working out in the schools. And the students aren't asked a lot when they go in there, but they're asked to rate their frustration level on a one to five scale when they come in the room, and they're asked to rate it again when they leave the room. And in nearly every case, it was a fairly dramatic reduction, and it's working. Now, just a quick tell you an anecdotal story about them. The day they were implemented, Governor Reynolds came to Hempstead to learn about the brain health rooms. And one of the young ladies that was on the school bus I was driving at the time was really excited when she got on because she got to meet the governor and get a picture taken with the governor. So I got on a T H online and found that picture and printed it out nice and put it in a folder with one of my city council cards and gave it to her the next morning. I said, when you talk to your grandchildren about the day you met the governor, be sure and tell them a city council member drove you to the meeting.
Any others? Yeah, Ms. Wethel.
I know Merrick Kavanaugh gave remarks, and I went to the mission for a neighborhood dinner last week. It was wonderful to create community and be invited there to share space and with our great city staff, who is really working on collaboration. I, I really appreciated that. And then the following night, there was actually a Mercy One V A Health Clinic discussion on how we care for first responders related to suicide and depression risk and long-term, just a great panel of local psychiatry, psychologists, specialists from the V A. We really need to, I feel compelled to take care of my patients, but specifically people who have been through a lot in the last few years, I think we need to look at our own staff and use that moving forward as a model, and lots of exciting things to come.
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Russell.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Dubuque Audubon Society for organizing a cleanup at the 16th Street Detention Basin on Sunday, and Mike and I had a great time hauling trash around. I'd like to congratulate Dubuque Symphony for their recent concert that had a tribute to veterans. I attended the Ruby Sutton Day at the M F C. My mom worked with Ruby at Operation New View, and it was a great event. And lastly, at opening doors, they had their attitude of gratitude, and it was amazing to see the community's support for women and children who are experiencing homelessness. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'll just add, along with the things that were already mentioned, and got to attend a couple of those, that was wonderful. I also did attend the National League of Cities Conference in, in Atlanta this past week. I was able to join our Director of Human Rights, Equity and Human Rights, sorry, a new name there, Gisela Aiken Shadle, in working towards another round of our Cities in Inclusive Entrepreneurship Program. We're going to join that again this year for N L C, and this year we're going to be focused on our Hispanic-Mantino population and entrepreneurship in that population. So that was wonderful to get that started. Also was on a panel to discuss revitalization of downtowns. I think sometimes we forget that all the things that we're doing, and I, I tell you, I was reminded about how much Dubuque is doing when I was on this panel. And by the way, people really want to talk about revitalizing downtown right now. It was nine o'clock on a Saturday morning and it was standing room only, and I know that wasn't because I was on the panel, it was the topple. So the other thing I do, I, you know, we don't often do this, but I want to give a shout out to another council member in Iowa. So something that happened at the N L C Conference was our president for the Iowa League of Cities, whose name is Ashley Van Orne, she's a council member for Cedar Rapids, actually was voted onto the National League of Cities Board, which is a major accomplishment, chosen from over 80 people, from what I understand. So Iowa currently is very well represented in the National League of Cities, and I appreciate all the work that we continue to do on that front, so. All right, with that, we do have a closed session, so I will entertain a motion, please. If we want to. Maybe that one would just die, we could go home. Yes, Mr. Jones?
I move the council going to closed session according to Chapter 20, with, with the Iowa Code anyhow, to discuss.
That would be Chapter 21.5.
The city council going to closed session according to Chapter 21.5 of the Code of Iowa to discuss purchase of or sale of real estate.
And confidential records.
And confidential records.
Thank you for the addition.
A second.
Now, we have a second from Mr. Sprank. For the record, the Attorney of City Council will consult with him on the issues to be discussed in closed session, is City Attorney Krenna Brumwell. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Russell?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, we are in closed session.